Let's call this board retreat to order on the dotted seven. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I must say, it's kind of ironic that that clock is running slow on the wall at a school board building. I think we should look into that because I'm using my Apple phone and this I think is definitely correct. So just as a reminder, this is a retreat which we haven't done in a while. PGC, thanks for bringing it back, but I remember when I was on the board, we used to do this often. And it is a, I think it's, well, let's see how it goes, but it's supposed to be like a deeper dive is really its purpose. And I think it's a great way to start the year to get some real analytics, something more deeply. So with that, I am going to put it right into our discussion on the assessment schedule, which I know that I've gotten lots of emails about they're, they're starting to happen. So let's, as a parent, so let's hear. So I'll turn it over to, I guess, Dr. Carabillo and Mark D'Amico. Why don't you guys come up here? Yeah. So we can. And now I'll wait, I should have also noted that per one of our colleagues, can I give you credit, Michael Joseph? Okay, he suggested we do this flip the classroom thing, right? And so we all watched a video. I hope we all did our homework. This one was seven minutes. The next one was thirty. Okay. Okay. You practiced. Okay. So I do appreciate the, the seven as well as the thirty with the emphasis on the seven. But so I think that was great. So, and I know it was posted on Board Doc. So hopefully everyone in the public got to see it as well. So with that, I turn it over to you. If you want to say anything else, otherwise we could just dive right into questions.
I think we're poised to answer questions.
All right. Who wants to go first? Michael Joseph, I'm going to make you go first. And so this is your idea.
Gotcha. Thanks again for the video. The, my thought was helpful and I think it's helpful for the, not only to frame this discussion, but really to sort of whole community was able to see it and digest it, you know, on demand. I think it's helpful. Not everybody can tune in and see these things or wants to sit through the whole board meeting if they really have a question about the, the assessment calendar. So it's great. I noticed that we, I have two, two, two questions. The, I saw all the which is helpful, which we've seen before, the updated assessment so round and the different types of assessments in each grade level. They, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about on the, in second grade, we have the universal screener by state statute, but I get the impression we have things that count or serve the same purpose as a universal screener in earlier grades, but we're not, but it's not labeled that in the, the chart. So, so how are we screening in K one for things like dyslexia and things like that? How we, how we, how are we catching students this week? Obviously the official universal screener, at least on that chart, if I read it right, wasn't until second grade. That's fair.
No, it's, it's K through two that we are using the universal screener. And, and on that subject, you know that the state has. Nope, just need a little talking. We're actually going to be exploring a new universal screener this year based on the state guidance. They've issued five universal screeners for us to explore for future use. We do have to have one in implementation for September 2023. Now, we would have normally started our exploration of the universal screeners in order to identify one. But we really need to wait. And I'm going to jump the gun a little bit and talk about the science of reading and state guidance on one of the five perhaps five or more programs that they're going to recommend that we put in place for September. You really don't want to choose the assessment before you identify the curriculum package that's going to go with it.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry. Thank you for putting together another wonderfully easy to understand and read assessment chart. I think it's very helpful for parents to sort of see what's coming. And you noted in the, in the report, I know I've asked this before, but that educators are using the assessment data to provide consistent feedback to support student growth, which is kind of what we're all about here. So, and the data is going to be analyzed and communicated to students and parents at the end of the assessment windows. I just wanted to make sure, is this happening at all grade levels and for all of the major assessments? And if not, which assessments per grade level?
So it does, but it is evolving. Now that we have the parent portal, we're trying to leverage parent access and we're looking at ways that we can incorporate assessment results into the parent portal. So it's much easier for parents to monitor student progress. What I would say is, and if you want to take, so for example, mathematics and the entire team is here. So if you have a specific content related question, they certainly can answer with greater specificity than I can. But for example, in math, there's a unit assessment. Teachers provide parents with the assessment score and the supporting documents so that they can have a conversation with their child about their performance, because it's not, it's really not helpful to a parent to just receive a number grade or a letter grade, right? You need to have, have the ability to look at the assessment, explore the right and wrong answers, and then talk to the teacher, should you want to perhaps explore ways to support your child in the areas that they perhaps weren't successful with before moving on to the next unit.
Which was, as I said, you jumped to my neck. It's my second follow up to that, which was, you know, are we also giving parents actionable ways to support those deficits when they see, find them at home? And I think you just sort of addressed some of that.
Through the parent letters, yes.
You know, the other question I just wanted to say, you know, ask, and you may not have the answer now is that, you know, we've consistently heard concerns about over testing for years. I noticed that you've gone through and looked to reduce and refine some of the assessments that were being given to students at different grades. I know last year we reduced the total number, got rid of STAR, the middle school level, and now we're using, you know, benchmarks three times a year. You know, I didn't know how, you know, are we getting feedback from educators on how that might be impacting their lessons plans or, you know, the, the academic changes in the classroom for students? And then well, I'll let you answer.
Great. So let's take a step back and talk about why did we make these changes? Just to make sure everybody's on the same page. We made these changes because we were being responsive to concerns that we heard from parents about assessment fatigue, concerns we heard from teachers about assessment fatigue, and also encroaching on valuable instructional time. And so you shouldn't continue to do what you've always done just because you think you have to. So we, I challenged the team to look inward at the data that was available to us. And Big Ideas is a wonderful example of mining current data to support opportunities to evaluate students readiness for perhaps an advanced learning placement. So we're taking the data that already exists and utilizing it more wisely and not creating testing redundancies, if that makes sense. Nobody's paying attention to me.
So it's very nice to have people watching us and keeping us safe. And we also use that, the benchmark data this summer for summer school for the first time, so that we could have the teachers who recommended students to go to summer school because they had some gaps for what skills they really needed to work on so that they could add that into the day of the child, whether it was, whether they were receiving tutoring or if they were in the classes. So we are starting to utilize it much more than we have before.
And when we switch to the conversation on, on the Summer Curriculum Institute, and the coordinators can speak to particular examples for you. We wanted to make sure that the assessments that currently existed had opportunities for extension events that kids could participate in that shows evidence that they can take a particular learning objective at a grade level and progress it to the next grade level. So that gives us the data that supports the decision that kids are ready for advanced learning opportunities.
Last question on this topic, because one of the things you reduced was some, the change from fifth to sixth grade placement. I'm looking at Bonnie back there. And I know, you know, this is not the time to go fully into detail for that, but I just want to make sure that parents are going to be made aware of that change because it consistently changes. And when they're going to be made aware, because I know this affects not just fifth graders, it affects our middle school principals who consistently get phone calls from, from parents trying to move students placements. So I just want to make sure that parents are going to be at, given adequate time to know that there's changes there, right?
I don't even need to turn around and look at Bonnie to know she's shaking her head. That, that communication was something that in my first year in this position, that we wanted to make sure we did a better job of being transparent and, and provided that information well in advance of meetings. And so we will continue to do that.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Well, this, this document or the video as well have prepared us in advance for the questions we might have by many of our constituents. So thank you very much. I am now armed and knowledgeable where before I was not. So thank you. Really armed and dangerous at this point. There is a, a little question I have about the, the state recommendations on the, the science of breeding. I had some questions on that one. Can you explain that one a little more thoroughly?
Sure. And, and I think we talked a little bit about that in the spring because the, the expectation from the state was that they were going to release the guidance to us July one. We still don't have the information from the state in terms of what their recommendations are for us to consider. So the reason why, when you look at the Summer Curriculum Institute presentation, there's nothing in there in terms of refinement work for K five. It's because we can't act on something that we're, we don't have the information for. Now, the state has said that they plan to release it at the end of this month. So we do look forward to making adjustments to our curriculum management plan, which we will present to you in October. And then we will share with you, we think it's five, but it could be more programs to address early reading success that we will have to explore and vet through a curriculum advisory committee. And then ultimately advise you of which one we're going to select and implement by the fall of September 2023. So we, we have a lot of work to do this year, but right now we're in a holding pattern. Good question, Joe.
Thank you. That's, that's the only question I had. It was so comprehensive that I could pick very little things out to ask. So thank you.
Ms. Kowalski.
So Mark, you had mentioned before curriculum, and I think you were just talking about it again. There's, the new curriculum is what exactly? That you're introducing? Because you said we can't pick the assessment that we want to use until we get the curriculum. So can you connect the dots between what is the curriculum you're talking about versus the assessment?
So let's take a step back and talk about the science of reading. That seems to be the, the buzz term. And the science of reading is the incorporation of the multiple tenets of what reading, good reading instruction looks like, including phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency comprehension. What the state is saying is we need to have a multifaceted approach to instruction so that all of those key components are represented. And they're going to advise districts on what a multifaceted program that they feel is appropriate and that we need to vet and then ultimately put in place for students. And we don't know what those five or, or six programs would be at this time. I'm fairly confident that we're, we're poised well in certain areas of the tenants. So our rollout of foundations in K one and two, and now this year in grade three is a key component of the science of reading that I think we will be able to absolutely keep. The infusion of our G O's in, in grades K one and two, I think absolutely will comply with what's, what's recommended by the state. But in terms of the comprehension component, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm most interested in terms of what their recommendations are. So it really will be a layered approach to reading instruction to get all, at all of the different tenants. Is that helpful?
It is.
It's much easier to talk in specifics. Once I have the names of the programs and can talk to you about the, you know, the highlights of each one and, and and then really take it through a curriculum advisory committee. So people can see what are the pros and cons of each system? What do we already have in place? So we might want to be steered more towards one of the recommendations than another. But right now it would be pure speculation on our part until they release the list.
So is it something that we would, we would have to, we'd have to take one of the five programs that they implement? And it's not just a matter of saying, we've already been doing this. Thanks, state, but you're late to the game.
Yeah, we, we, we don't, we're not in a position where we could say that we're well represented in all the tenants that, that, that we need to identify and be accountable for. And within the curriculum management plan that we submitted last year, we've already identified that there was work that needed to be done in K five reading instruction. So this is just accelerating that work.
On the, sorry, the last piece that you said, which was the comprehension. That's the piece that you're most worried about versus the other tenants? We just, for example, on the G O's, if I understand, we just use some out money to buy certain books for the G O's component. So I would hate to have to lose that.
Well, ARP funny. Yeah. I, I, I feel very fairly confident that foundations and G O's will be a nice companion to whatever the recommendations are from the state.
And that can be intertwined with whatever curriculum they suggest we could use the G O's.
And I, and I would, I would hope that the, the state expresses a certain level of latitude and, and, and local control, right? So that we can make those decisions.
And when will we get these?
Well, we were hoping for July one, then we were hoping for the end of July, and now we've heard perhaps September thirtieth, right? So we'll bring this conversation back to you, to you all in, in probably October.
I have a question. If you don't, go ahead.
Thank you for really digging down and looking at what assessments we need or don't. Cause I do think like to your point, you know, just because we've always done something the same way, doesn't mean we should continue to do that. And I think particularly for the elementary students, I think that if we have the data to assess them without adding to their stress level and their testing and as well as for the teachers, I think that's a very worthwhile goal. And I'm glad to see you were able to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo that and then ask a question. I remember I've had to, I have a current fifth grader, but I had the fifth graders that are now passed. I remember fifth grade was particularly a high testing year. And I was happy to see some of that dropped because that, and especially as we look about matriculating and continuing your matriculation, the out program as you move into middle school. At that point you have a lot of data. And so there's probably no need to get additional data, although I did have a question on that because I noticed that you brought the COGAT back for second grade, which I have to say, I was always a big fan of. I think it tells you a lot about a student. And you always took that second test at fifth grade, which I have to, I have to say, I always kind of enjoyed seeing what happened in their numbers. Why, even though I just said we have too much in fifth grade? Do we feel like we shouldn't be using it again there just to see perhaps what happened between second and fifth?
So statistically speaking, and I know Bonnie has a big smile on her face. We, I asked that very question to Bonnie and the COGAT results from second grade statistically doesn't change. It's, they're relevant for three years. So you wouldn't see much movement or growth in a child for, in retesting them in fifth grade. So why, it's a, again, I, I would categorize that as a redundancy.
Okay, sorry. Okay, again.
I just had one particular, one question regarding the discussion with parents and getting and information going to parents. It's, is it just the, still the letter that goes out with the, or what discussion? How are we enhancing? Here's a better way of asking a question. How are we enhancing our communication with parents regarding the results? And what parents should or should or shouldn't be doing to encourage their students and what's happening in the classroom as a result of getting the assessment and understanding where there's that student is scoring?
So I'm actually going to turn around and I'm going to let someone else come up to the microphone and talk about our communication process because Mike Reed, our K eight math coordinator, Tara Fogel, our science coordinator, and Kim Palladino, our new K eight ELA coordinator, we're very closely with our out facilitator, Bonnie O'Regan, in, in reaching out to parents who inquire about additional information about the data and how to interpret it. And so we have actually a very detailed communication plan. Carrie, you want to take this one? Great.
I don't have to hold it down. I'm going to start with the fifth to sixth transition because I think that's where we did the most work last year. We brought back virtual meetings for all parents where we invited all of the coordinators in three separate timelines. We had two English sessions and one Spanish session. And we invited parents to come and learn. We recorded those sessions. They're actually still available on the website. If you haven't looked, including the slides in both languages. And we do some parent outreach from our website and we provide all of our teachers with parent outreach materials. And then we invite our teachers into training sessions and program meetings to help them understand scores and communicate with parents about what they can do at home. As you know, face goal is really big in our strategic plan as well as in the work that's happening at the elementary schools right now. So we're empowering teachers on how to communicate with parents from a holistic perspective. And as the academic coordinators, we're providing teachers with those supports to help them feel confident in those conversations.
So first, so that's the fifth to sixth transition, but let's say you have a third grader who come and they get their test scores back. What communication is provided to them, those parents to say, okay, this is, it comes home in an envelope and now what?
Yep. So we have the parent portal. Most of our information is going to be done virtually. So we're not going to get all those envelopes all the time. But for students, I think you're talking about ALP assessments and specifically in that battery? Or do you mean all assessments?
All assessments.
Okay. So most assessments are going to be done through the parent portal and teachers have information how to communicate with parents there. ALP specifically, because those assessments are not going to be the curriculum embedded assessments are going to be separate. We have score analysis report meetings two times each time an assessment is given. So we have an evening session and a morning session. Again, we invite all parents. We tell them ahead of time. We communicate that in emails through principal smores as well as our ALP smore newsletter. And we let parents come, we present to them for about 30 minutes, then we hold a 30 minute Q and A for them to ask any questions they may have about score analysis. And then we invite them for 15 minute phone or in person or Google Meet conferences with Bonnie if they want a personalized breakdown of that score information.
Okay. And do we know whether or not, is there a way to track to see whether or not parents actually access the parent portal? So they've had that ability? And does anyone check to make sure if parents did look or not look so that there's, perhaps they had difficulty following up, or they don't understand that they needed to read this, or maybe they just don't care. But the question is, I've had just a, a bunch of communications with parents saying, I don't understand what I'm getting. Like, how do I read this? And I'm looking at it as a parent saying, well, this is how I read mine when I get it and look at it. But so some part of message isn't still getting out and it's not a criticism. It's just what else is out there? And how do we know who to reach out to if parents haven't looked at the portal?
And one of the first places is going to be our Greenwich Public Schools website with recorded meetings as well as information about how to access the parent portal and then what information is coming out with our Greenwich Benchmark Assessments in particular. So the three times a year K five for ELA and math. I believe it was Mike and Mark who gave a full parent training, invited parents in. Usually we're going to communicate first through local PTAs at schools who request it or through the PTA council, and then that's pushed out through some parent groups. Anything that we make available online, we try to promote in our smores and then we ask principals, we give them some words to put in their smores as well. You might infer that some parents are more likely to read a school smore that's just about their kid versus a district smore. So we're always evolving our communication tactics and your feedback only helps us learn and evolve more. So we'll keep working on it.
The smore is not the ground cracker marshmallow.
No, it is not. That's our, our, our district wide newsletter is referred to as a smore, but it's just delicious. Yeah, yeah. So the schools have one, ALP has one, the academic team has one, GPS district digest. Yep. Yeah.
Just following up, back like, because we are talking about all these assessments of the data. And I know in October, we're going to have a whole achievement report. I know that's a lot of it's based on the state assessments, but do we have any assessments that we're using in the district or, yeah, like kind of beyond that state data, are we going to see any of our assessments in the comparison and what we're going to be discussing? Because obviously we're, we're in the early stages and you're only just assessing the kids now. Just kind of to get a flavor for what's to come.
The short answer is yes, we can, we can certainly put together slides that represent fall benchmark assessment data, because the window will have been closed. We have time to analyze. And yes, we can, we can run that parallel to the SBA result.
Yeah. Cause I think that'd be helpful for us all to see, right? Particularly, you know, with the way the last two years have gone.
Joe, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I was thinking back, one of the questions I was going to ask is for the October is because, you know, we, we had this whole new math program with Big Ideas and all the assessments were built in. And I am dying to see how the teachers have responded to that, how the program has worked well for students. And I was going to ask, because we do have local data that we use as well to compare to the statewide. And I was going to ask for that for October. So hurrah. And then I'm going to just ask one question about the middle school assessments. I noticed that we are not, and it might just be a typo that got left off. It happens. It happened last year for something. Why are we not giving end of the unit assessments in social studies and the marking period four for six through eighth grade? Is, did that just get somehow left, you know, when the, when the?
I think that is a typo because as we're onboarding all of our new primary resource materials, the goal was first to make sure all the materials were readily available to teachers. We just need to go back and amend that. So Karen, as usual, good catch.
Well, I just didn't know, you know, in the, in the charts, maybe the, you know, it wasn't wide enough to have all of the information because there's so much good stuff there. So I just wanted to check.
We have, we have very specific companion assessments that go along with the, the newly minted units.
Michael Joseph.
Let me just try, try my question one more time here because I don't think I phrased it correctly from before. So on grade two, star reading state required is listed as the, as a universal screener. That's technically the only, in grade one, grade one and K, there's nothing that's actually listed as that. Things are listed as screener, but not as universal screener. So what are the, what are we using? If you, for the purpose of the community and everything, what are we using in K and one for that purpose?
In grade K, we use star early literacy as our screener in marking period two and three. And then in grade one, we use star early literacy in marking period one, two, and three. We transitioned to general star in second grade.
We're, we're confident that that's doing a, a quality enough job at identifying those, those early gaps or screening for dyslexia or things like that. Or, or is there more work that we might need to be doing there? I guess is the question.
That's kind of a trap question, seeing as well, seeing as we are going to have the sunset star, it's not on the approved list. Once we have our recommendation for which universal screener we think best meets those needs, we'll bring it to the board for discussion.
Ms. Costin.
We're are we completely sunsetting star altogether at some point? Is that what, did I mishear you?
Using it as a universal screen is no longer an option for us.
Okay. So star isn't going away. All, all of star.
Well, it depends because we would have to pay for it and we would have to have a purpose for it. And we do use it as an alternative assessment for new students to the district. So Renaissance Learning might not like it, but we're probably going to go, go to them and say, we would like to renegotiate the contract because we, the, 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 the amount of use will significantly fall off when we use it simply as a, a way of grabbing quick data for students new to the district. So that's how I would envision us keeping star as an opportunity. But as a universal screener, we simply can't use it.
I love asking about math. So.
So just because it's top of mind, it seems like we're still doing IXL diagnostics. And maybe that's not considered an assessment, but that was kind of the impression I was given today. So could you?
So when you use the, when you say still.
Yes, because I guess I kind of thought. Isn't it still, but because they were using a diagnostic tool apparently today, which I had never heard of. So that feels like new, actually not still. IXL, yes, we've always used, but using it for diagnostic purposes.
Yeah. So, so let me explain a little bit about what we're trying to do in math to have through lines from identifying specific skills that students need to work on to the Big Ideas program, and then how we actually support students at various levels depending on the information we get. So IXL we've had, and it's, it's a way for kids, kids to practice certain skills tied to the curriculum.
They have a feature called their diagnostic, their real time diagnostic. It's not an official, um, you know, screener or things that we're using. From a district perspective, um, uh, rather it's, it's in sort of in the control of the building to use at the classroom level to figure out what each student specifically needs. So that diagnostic, um, when you give it at the beginning part of the year, takes about 40 minutes. It doesn't have to be done in one sitting. It can be done over the course of five days, say 10 minutes a day. And then, um, every week you, you hop in there saying, we're going to call it maintenance Monday. You answer five to eight questions and what it does is it provides skills that students need to work on. They could be below grade level. They could be way above grade level. From there, we're going to trace those skills and, and what the students need back to the big ideas curriculum. We created this, um, I guess I'm getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but, um, a cohesive progression document. We worked really hard on that this summer. And that's basically a roadmap for teachers to, um, be able to figure out what was the prerequisite skill? Or what is the next skill that the student needs? So they can sort of trace vertically where the student needs to go and where that's accessible in the curriculum. So, um, the diagnostic is, is a new thing, um, that we're using, but it's not necessarily the portal itself is not new. Teachers know it. And so that's why I was excited about it because they know how to log in. They know how to get information out of it. We're just leveraging another aspect of it and it's not really going to change all that much from day to day, what the students do. What it provides us is grouping ability. So certain kids need things at different group levels, but then it provides individual, um, skills that a student needs to work on. So my, what I envision is that, um, classrooms will use it as, you know, small group, kind of whole group stuff that are tied to big ideas. And they have a skills plan that's tied directly to big ideas. So they can trace the skills right to specific sections in our program. Um, and then also, um, specific skills plans for individual students. So I kind of envisioned like two days a week, sort of teacher directed, you're going to work on these things. Two days a week, you're going to work on your own personal goals. Cause we know from John Hattie's visible learning that one of the most high leverage things we can do is have students be very aware of how they're performing, self-reporting grades, things like that. So, um, to me, that's a high leverage strategy that we can use. Um, and it's easy enough to do because most teachers are using the program anyway already. So it's kind of like clicking another button and getting some extra data.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. And I think, uh, you know, to Karen's point before about, I mean, I feel like most parents are very familiar with IXL and it's something you can see at home and it's very, it breaks it down quite easily. So you could be like, well, you're not, you're weak on order of operations, but you've got, you know, something else down. So that's, I think that's very helpful.
Yeah. And one other thing that I'm really excited about, did this turn back on? Is, uh, the skills that tie to our big ideas program aren't just the generic skills in IXL. They'll be specific to that section in big ideas. So for example, I, an IXL skill might be multiply between two and five, like, you know, single digits. And, um, in a big ideas lesson, five point two, it might be only multiplied between two and three, you know, single digits. And so it'll be specific to that skill. So, um, it's very integrated and, um, you know, I'm very big on minimal goals for teachers, but high leverage goals. So that way they can manage it, digest it. And, um, you know, hopefully they, they ask me to come out and help them look at the data, help them, um, figure out how to instruct the students. Cause that's where I like to live.
Yes, you do. Um, I had one more question, but it wasn't related to math. So does anyone have a math question? No. Okay. You like math? Yeah. Math is good, but I don't want to. Um, thanks, Mike. My next question was pretty simple, which going back to out for a moment, is that 113A? Also changed? Is that right? The placement process for 113A? Am I right about that?
Last year we changed the 113A and it actually is what we are doing. We are now mirroring that from fifth to sixth now. So we're using the data that we have already on the students in order to make those placement recommendations.
So that's right. So it happened a year ago. So I know it's early, but can you tell? Was there a difference between placing people in between 113 and 113A where there was kind of this gatekeeper versus? Now is it sort of matriculating in the same manner? You're getting the same numbers?
I have not looked at that.
You don't know yet. Okay.
Can you talk about that during the ALP report?
Yes, we can. October is a big month. Okay. Any other questions on this? Oh, okay. Ms. Kowski.
So Bonnie, on that same front, do you notice, did you notice, notice a difference in the changing of the assessments into 113A? The number of kids that get placed that versus 113 versus 113A based upon the old assessments versus what you have in place now, which is looking at a multitude of data points. I have not looked at that enrollment data. Honestly.
Yeah, I'd be curious. I'd be curious to see.
Bring it back and put it into the ALP report, but I don't want to speak off the cuff because I have not looked at that. Not asking you to, just I'd be curious to see if we're seeing difference in numbers and how, if we're putting more kids into 113A or less kids into 113A based upon our criteria. And then a follow on question be that is, do we find that there's based upon the new assessments? Are there more parents advocating for 113A as opposed to before, when there was just the test, when you could say, no, this is the test and that's it. And that was the, the Bible response and therefore less criticism or complaints from parents. I'd just be curious on those two points. Yes.
Did you have a question, Ms. Hirsch? Okay. Um, anything, anyone else? All right. I'm sorry. We didn't ask everyone a question, but there will be more. Exactly. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, curriculum institute update. Same team.
Same team. Um, we're ready when you're ready.
This was the 30 minute video. Thank you very much, Michael Joseph. Go ahead.
So let me, if you would, since this is, the board retreat is meant to be a discussion. So if you'll permit me, they, um, let me take the board back a year to when Ms. Costin and I were sitting, um, out there watching the board. And watching our very well meaning administrative team, um, present, um, ad nauseam, um, the 90 minute version of this. It was not 90 minutes because they prepared 90 minutes of material. Much of it was 90 minutes because over the course of the presentation, they were interrupted by many board members to pepper questions as it came up and things like that. Such that it was very much a, um, to no fault of anybody, a came out as a disjointed presentation that was very difficult for, uh, folks like us in the audience to follow. Was having sat in those seats as an administrator, they was unfair for administrative team to, to sit through. And was challenging for the community as a whole, as far as trying to get the, the point across, um, of what the whole purpose was. So I started thinking, is there a better, as a candidate, is there a better way to do this? And, um, thought of how we support our, our teachers in flipping the classroom. They, uh, when you flip the classroom, you do the video at home, the lesson is at home and then students come in and apply what they've learned. To the discussion, classroom discussion. And why can't the board do that? So that's kind of what we're doing here. And that's why, um, so it would be. Now, of course, a year later, we forget all that and we're groaning about a 30 minute video, but let, let, let's, let's be mindful.
I'd argue some of us maybe aren't as good at homework either, as some of the students, right?
That's why. So it's universal, in, in the spirit of universal design, perhaps you could give us the, um, one minute executive summary. I'm now putting on the spot of just the, the purpose of the, of the, of the curriculum institute, the, um, and what to summarize in the video. For also community members that might be watching this live.
Sure. And, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about why do we even have summer curriculum institute? And, and it's very, uh, it has a very specific purpose. It's to be responsive to teacher and student needs. So the responsibility of a, uh, content coordinator or department head at the high school is to monitor the effective use of curriculum. We need to know that the materials that we've either purchased or prepared are effective in providing students with meaningful, uh, and engaging learning experience. So we have to go out and inspect what we expect. But as we utilize those materials, we often find that curriculum evolves and so it requires refinement. But you're not going to do refinement during the school year. So you take the opportunity in the summer to bring in well intentioned, well informed teachers who have interacted with that curriculum. And you pair them with the content experts and you work at making those refinements, whether it be pacing, whether it be adding enrichment, which we did this summer, uh, you, I think you see the through line there. And that was very purposeful because it also aligned with our mission of, of reducing testing. So the one minute summary i- is just that it's an opportunity to refine what we currently use. Be responsive to teacher feedback, be collaborative so that teachers have the opportunity to say, I had a hand in making the changes because I know that for some of the students in my class, the materials that we had just didn't, didn't hit the mark. And in the spirit of universal design, you are always aviving, evolving as a curriculum writer. So that's the purpose. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I just wanted to start off by saying, well, I'm sure you guys all have seen me smiling because all of the things that I looked for as a parent and before I became a board member on PTAC were all of the things that are happening now. And I, I couldn't be happier. Having the opportunity for parents to be able to see what, what it is that you, the great work that you guys do behind the scenes to give their students what they need every day in class. And I really wanted to sort of start, start off by comment commending for you, not only on focusing on the core subjects, but also in foreign language art and the music curriculums as well. And I know I say it often because not every student that we have here finds their passion and talent in math, for instance. Some find their passion in the arts. Um, we have to give every student what it is that they need to shine. So thank you so much for that. And I was also really pleased to see how much work went into creating a separate advanced science curriculum for middle school, since, uh, we as a board were asking, begging literally for that. So thank you so much, uh, for, for taking care of that. So back to the parent note, you know, we talked a lot about the work that you did to create or update the inward and outward facing documents. So I'm not sure if you want to, I was going to say much like what, uh, Michael Joseph just asked. Sort of explain a little bit what an outward facing document is, something like a syllabus or a course overview. I know it was mentioned in the presentation, uh, that we watched before we got here, that it would be, uh, available to parents in school ag. Um, I'm not sure if that would also be available somewhere else, maybe, uh, located on the GPS website. Perfect. So if we can make sure that we, uh, highlight a way for that, for parents to see that maybe somewhere on the main page, just it's so hard sometimes for them to dig through and you guys have done such incredible work. This is what parents have been begging for. Um, so thank you. But, um, yeah.
Just to, to kind of interject on that, we, I challenged the team that we didn't want anything more than three clicks really for a parent. And so the, and, and I guess I should, um, clarify and distinguish inward versus outward facing documents. So an inward facing document is a little bit more detail oriented and prescriptive for teacher use. And an outward facing document is a parent overview so that it answers the age old question. What is my child doing in math this year and at what time? And how would I be able to help them? Can you, can you steer me in the right direction of the learning targets? And so that's the purpose of having outward facing documents. And in my first year, I heard very loudly and very clearly from, from PTAC representation that what was currently on the website wasn't adequate. So in our first summer during COVID, we diligently put out parent facing documents for all subjects. And we've continued to, again, in, in the spirit of, of taking feedback from parents in this case, revise those parent facing documents, uh, so that they do feel that they have, without actually having them in the classroom, have a good understanding of what we are teaching their children in every content area.
Well.
Might be a little more than a minute, but.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, and since we have been so focused on science and asking that for you, I know that you focus on creating new STEM experiences. For the advanced science students and for new units for the eighth grade advanced science. Um, I'm really excited. Um, I didn't know, you know, their new curriculum and the materials. So I just, you know, I, I just didn't know, are you, you also talked about creating more hands on activities. Is that for all levels of science and, and some more assured experiences? I'd love to hear a little bit more, um, you know, about some of the advanced science, because I know how hard you guys worked and it's something we begged for.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch, for the opportunity for me to brag about my team because it is not just me in there. We had a team of up to nine middle school teachers, depending on which grade level we are working on and some ALP teachers and the middle school personnel helping us down in the ALP, um, assignments that we've created. And I want to first start with the assured experiences you mentioned. I don't know if you guys knew this, but we have, um, been fortunate enough to receive an over $50,000 grant from the Greenwich Alliance. That's going to be bringing every first grade student to the Bruce Museum and every second grade student to the Greenwich Autobahn. This came directly from PTA members that came to me and said, we want to do this, but it needs to be handled by the district in order to make this happen. And we made it happen. And thank goodness for Dr. Carabillo helped me finish at the very last deadline and we got it in and it got approved and we're doing it this year and we're really jazzed about it. So that's first celebration. Yeah, we're really excited for Greenwich, by Greenwich, community partners, really working for our students and we're excited about it. With each of those opportunities comes parent involvement. We're inviting parents to the Bruce and to the Autobahn in some weekend and evening opportunities to meet with students from other schools and really bring our town together. So that's first assured experiences. We're not assured yet currently grant funding funded, but we're, we're working at it and we're excited to bring this over the next year. Moving into K five, our look was at advanced science. So we looked at three through five ALP science. And what we did is we created extension activities that live in parallel with the core curriculum. Because even though you are an ALP science student who has qualified for ALP based on your testing, you still have to learn all the third grade standards. So what we've done is created pacing guides to help our ALP teachers. And we've leveraged the existing curriculum partnerships that we have at the middle school level and we brought them down to our three through five learners. And we brought back hands on experiences in elementary as engineering and generation genius. So we have hands on experiences. We had an ALP teacher write those activities with the help of my middle school teacher. And there's examples of them in that report and I invite you guys to come in and watch.
Please tell me the Rube Goldware, Rube Goldberg experiments were brought back. That was the greatest thing I had ever been able to witness. I still have the video of my child's like work, time and trial and trial and trial. He got it going.
We do have a whole slew of information or hands on activities for the force and motion unit, including roller coasters as well. So there's lots of good stuff happening that you'll be excited to look at. And again, that information is available online. So you can see more, but I do invite our board members into those third, fourth and fifth grade ALP classrooms. If you'd like to coordinate a visit with me, please do. I'd love to bring you in to see it.
I've noticed that I've received that sort of email as a parent, which I hadn't in a while. So I greatly appreciated that the teachers are also reaching out to sort of include parents. And yeah, that's, that's unique and something that I, I know a lot of people value.
Yeah.
Michael Joseph.
Talking about that because I think that's wonderful. The, whenever I hear about those kinds of programs, I often wonder, I have to wonder about. So what are we doing to make sure, um, our students that are not testing in the ALP are achieving or are getting just as many high interest, hands on, um, experiences at STEM? And then what are we doing to, to narrow that gap? The, uh, I, 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 obviously the paradigm can't be in, in that, in those upper elementary science, the paradigm can't be growing the gap by just creating all of these, um, very good, um, enrichment materials for, 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 for the students who test in. And everybody else just kind of chugging along, right? We're trying to get everybody up the, up the, up the same hill to narrow that gap. So, so how, how are we thinking about that in the science? I guess was the question I had on the science portion.
Yeah. And we think about that first because ALP isn't a place where we want other students jealous to be. ALP is a place where we're meeting the needs of students who require advanced programming. So we do have robust hands on curricular experiences at the K five level in all of our classrooms. And my mission this year is to get back into those rooms. This is the first year, and as we visited every classroom over the past seven days, it feels like we went in and the first thing you're going to see is all of the science that, this is the first thing I'm seeing. You may be seeing books, you may be seeing math manipulatives, but I'm seeing all the science bins and all the curriculum materials are brought back out. And we have grouped tables and now we're poised to bring back those hands on experiences. I have to tote the, the horns of my teachers who have been doing online simulations and making things work during COVID, when it wasn't necessarily safe for our students to be doing. The hands on materials or sharing of supplies, but we're ready and we're, we're going back to it. And science is a focus of professional learning for all teachers this year. We're going to be starting with that on November 8th, our first full day PD. We're fortunate enough that we have that time to do program learning. We're fortunate enough that we have that time to do program learning. And I understand that the foundation for wonder and curiosity and exploration happens in kindergarten, first and second grade. And I'm dedicated to making sure our teachers know how to do that and have the mechanism to measure students' growth through that.
And although, is this on? And although the, the additional information that I'm going to offer you is not as exciting as what Tara is offering you, one of the things that ensures success is a systematic approach to teaching and science and social studies at every school was approached a little bit different. They would do rotations for a month. We're going to teach social studies and we're going to teach science. And invariably, you didn't get through all of the curriculum responsibilities. So I made a decision in, in, in cooperation with our 11 elementary principals to standardize and have a systematic approach. So Monday, Wednesday and Friday is science instruction and on Tuesday and Thursday, social studies. Now you might ask me, can you get through all of the social studies standards by grade level on two days a week? We did the analysis, we created a pacing calendar, we provided it to teachers, and yes, we can. That said, at some point during the school year, we should have a, a discussion, a robust discussion about instructional time at the elementary school. Because instructional time is a scarce resource and we are challenged to get all of our instructional minutes in when you think about all of the things that we layer in during a school day.
For elementarys only.
Yes.
That is interesting.
And years ago, we did do a time study analysis. I'm sure some, some people are aware of that and it's probably time to do that again.
Huh, okay. Yes, Ms. Downey.
It's not math or science.
Well, then we don't want to hear from you.
No, I'm saying I can wait. I just wanted to ask, I know, I know it's referenced here about, talk about the sixth through eighth grade ELA, the curriculum, that we had the outside curriculum writers. I don't know if you want to just kind of talk about how that went, the process, where things are. Because I mean, it's referenced in here, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I mean, we're really excited about the rollout and the partnership that we had with our teachers. If I'm being a hundred percent honest, I think teachers would have liked to have had more opportunities to have control over what we created. But here's the thing I will always safeguard against, and that is pulling teachers out of classroom instruction time in front of students to do this type of work. I just don't feel it's appropriate. So I do think we need to provide opportunities for teachers to collaborate with outside vendors and provide feedback as they interact with the materials and their students. And we provided multiple avenues all of last year to do that. And we will continue to do that. And we have onsite days planned for our curriculum writers to work with teachers as they, as they and their students experience it for the first time. And so we're, we're launching unit one and we're really excited about it.
So just to clarify, so now we have a standardized, much more standardized six, seven, eight ELA curriculum for the middle school and social study. We did do, because I couldn't remember, we talked about it and okay.
And this year's target is six, eight writing. So at the end of this.
The target meaning.
Writing instruction, so developing primary resource materials that are companion to the reading units that we've, that we've supported.
Where can, it's within three clicks because I, I was trying to find it.
The, the primary resource materials are not online. They are embedded in our, in school ag for teacher use. But we do have parent-facing documents that explain again what it is that teachers are exposing students to in alignment with state and national standards.
Do they, with those, so those parent-facing documents, do they go as far as, is that a scope and sequence or unit maps? Or is it more?
Yes and no. You know, a scope, a scope and sequence, yes. A unit map, not necessarily because I mean, that gets really granular. Okay.
Joe.
I've got a bit of a different sort of question as my questions usually are. We have inward-facing documents, we have outward-facing documents, we have forward-facing documents. And now I know that especially certainly the, the parents here of the children in the school are very involved with their children. There's a lot of parents who are not very involved with their children. They leave it to you guys to educate them and they sort of send them, drop them off, open the door, kick them out of the car and drive away as quickly as they can. So nobody can chase and catch up to them and say, hey, wait a minute, I'd like to talk to you. And then they come back and pick up the kid and, and the same thing, drive away. What educational difference do you believe those kids who don't have the same inward-looking document, outward-looking document, involve them with their kids, those kids that are entrusted to our, our, our district to educate those kids? What educational difference do you think they might be experiencing not having the involved parents who understand how to help their kids subject to subject?
Well, I know we have Principal Feinstein in the room and he, and he would tell you that it's incredibly important to have a powerful homeschool connection. And when you identify that there are homes where parents simply cannot provide the same level of support because maybe they're working two jobs, it falls on the shoulders of the educators to find opportunities to extend, extend the school day so that we can replicate the additional support that a child might get at home. And so it is, it's, it is an ever-existing challenge for us. But we have to assume that ownership and, and, and that necessary responsibility. And there's no panacea for that. It's just constant looking at opportunities and ways to engage students before and after school and providing them with, with additional exposure to, to content that they need.
So, so I, I guess you're saying that you guys kind of look and try to find these kids that don't have that support and give extra help to those kids?
One hundred percent.
But even those that are less conspicuous, those like parents like myself who tend to leave it to you guys to educate our kids, myself and Jill, my wife, you know Jill, of course, very, very involved. She was, when you were at the Julian Curtis, she was the PTA president there, very involved in a lot of aspect of our kids' education, myself, my wife, we're not, we're not, and still not very good students and never have been. So, so therefore we sort of leave it to our kids and we were gifted. The first, our child was an ALP student, a very good student. The other ones were, were average and they're, they're doing their thing and, and doing well. And the three older kids, they're a very productive members of our society now. And then we're going very interesting jobs and, but I guess I'm saying that, and, and obviously there's people are very obvious that you can identify that need that extra help. But it is, I'm just trying to understand, are our parents making a, a mistake by somehow not being? And how do we express to them that they should be more involved with their children? I'm just trying to think with our experience, because we're not very conspicuous that we might not be involved with our kids on the academic side of things. Hell, I'm on the Board of Ed, aren't I? So you would think that maybe I would be involved in that. But we kind of leave it to you guys. We don't, we don't look over their shoulders. We kind of, how'd you do today? Oh, I'm not doing well in that class. Well, you better start doing better. And that's all there is to it. You know, that's the way we treat our kids. So how do you, what deficiency? I guess the question I have is what, what message do we have to the parents that might choose not to be involved? Who can be more involved? Is there, do you feel is a differential in the education those kids are getting?
I think there's always value add when you have parents who are meaningfully and productively engaged in their, their students' academic performance. And when we present the strategic plan for the district, we will have a specific goal around family and community engagement. And it's critically important that, that, that that take really center stage in all of our schools. And our, our principals do a really nice job of, of communicating and out and providing outreach opportunities and welcoming parents in to provide them with learning opportunities so they can support their children at home. I think one of the wonderful things that did come from COVID is that we do videotape a lot of those experiences now or provide virtual options for parents who can't make it. So, you know, coming out of COVID, there are, there are things that are actually silver linings. But, but Joe, you ask a really hard question and, and, and it requires a, a, a great deal of effort on all of our parts in support of the board to continually look for students who may fall through the cracks. And, and I will connect that with the conversation we just had on assessment. One of the most important reasons why we assess students is to monitor progress. And if we are looking at every child's performance consistently throughout the year and you see a falloff in performance, that teacher needs to act on that. So they need to intervene with the student, they need to intervene with the family. And then the administration needs to get involved so that we can find meaningful ways to support children before gaps widen. So I hope that's somewhat helpful in, in terms of.
No, that's good. I think what we need to do is get, get sort of a, a message out to the less conspicuous parents that are just dropping their kids off and trying. And certainly at our home, we, we, we support our kids, we're there for them all the time. And, and we're certainly good parents in many ways, but we feel sometimes that we're less supportive on the things we're not very good at in our house. And, and so we would be the less conspicuous ones who might need some encouragement. So possibly, I guess we have to look at the less conspicuous people in addition to the conspicuous ones and, and try to figure out a way of getting them more involved. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
It's a great question, Joe, and the perfect thing to talk about a retreat, honestly. I almost want to talk about the New York Times Weekend section now. Did everyone read that? What is the purpose of public education? But I won't, it was pretty cool.
I read the Emily Hanford book.
But it was, yeah, so hard to follow that, Joe. Ms. Costin.
I'll ask Joe's question a different way. You know, in, in our house, once they hit AP statistics, I'm no good to you. So, you know, we have to sort of let them know when they need to ask for help. But, um, and they might be, I'm no good to them even before statistics. But so I guess the other question I had was for the kids who don't yet know how to really advocate. Do we have enough math interventionists and reading and interventionists to support those kids? Is everyone who needs help getting it with the extra help that we have available to them?
I love these trap questions because I will always tell you that I will advocate for additional interventionist supports in our schools because our numbers are growing. And I think the interventions that we have in place are doing an incredible job. And if you were to ask me to share their caseloads with you, they are jam-packed from the start of the day to the end of the day. So that is a, a testament to the needs that we have and the strong desire of our interventionists to meet everyone's needs. But yes, we need more.
Yeah, since this is a retreat, let me answer Laura's question for you. The, um, so I think this is where Mark mentioned the strategic plan, which is coming, I know. And the Dr. Jones and the leadership team was very, very hard at work and did a tremendous amount of, of effort on that this summer. So we're almost at the point, they, with my fellow committee members, we're almost at the point to bring that to the board where that will very much inform these kinds of conversations, obviously this year. But this time next year, I think a lot of the curriculum work that we're talking about will, will be informed by the strategic plan, which has a goal specifically around math and math achievement and literacy goals and all these academic goals, really helping ground graduation rates, really help ground our work moving forward, where we can have these kinds of conversations grounded in data around, you know, how, how are we doing with math? Do we need more math interventionists? Is there something, you know, is, are we making the progress we need to? So, so it's, it's a work in progress that we're going to be, I don't know if you want to say anything, Tony, about that.
So I just want to confirm, social studies is now out of ALP?
One hundred percent out of ALP. And, and again, if, if you want me to take you down that historical road as to how it got in there, we can do that. But I think everybody knows.
I know that history. I just want to make sure it's out.
Course has been correct.
Got it. Now, um, maybe I'm not reading this document correctly, but I would like to understand the advanced science program in middle school better. Are kids, is it still within the same classroom or is it a separate class now? Because that, I'm sorry, I'm not getting that from this document.
I, I think you were all very clear with us that you wanted a separate course and that's what we've provided.
Okay, so there's separate courses now for sixth, seventh and eighth advanced science.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, there was something in there that I jumped between, but I'm going to jump back to asking a quick question. I, I know I mentioned at the start that a lot of, it's a lot of work, lot of work done on foreign language, which is not something we've actually had for a while. So again, I just want to start by saying thank you for the work on focusing on foreign language offerings from elementary all the way through high school. And especially for creating an honors option for American Sign Language so that it is now in line with the rest of our foreign languages. You know, it really goes back to our strategic plan. It goes back to our vision of graduate, for students to be able to, you know, helping our students function effectively in an independent, global community by providing them language support. I know, so I have two questions. So for the G, I'm going to start at the high level and then go down. At the high school, the language offerings, you mentioned something about virtual language labs. I was wondering if you can give me a little flavor on what that is.
So maybe we can introduce our new K-12 Flassini LA Coordinator to all of you, Jeffrey Shanker. So Jeffrey?
Hi, nice to meet you all.
Welcome.
So I've been on for about a month and a half now. We had, um, we had a virtual lab training. And basically what that allows us to do is it allows us to have students in the classroom using technology so they don't actually have to move out of their classroom. And it also provides teachers with the opportunity to record students as they're in class. So they're given a task, they can record it and then the class can move on. So the teachers are not having to spend time pulling kids out maybe into the hallway. It's also a tool that's used during midterms and finals to assess speaking.
You know, the age-old need for, you know, good accent. And so is that something that you're looking, well, it's true, it makes a big difference. So I just didn't know if, are we going to be looking to put that into all of our high school level courses or, or further downward?
Lab is something that's accessible to all teachers in the high school. So they'll all be able to use it. So ninth grade through, through 12th grade.
Well, that's great. And now I'm going to jump to our youngest learners in elementary school. You know, I know that the program at the elementary level has, has had some bumps along the road, especially since foreign language was often offered at the same time that students were pulled out for other courses like ALP Classroom or other student support. And those students were sort of left floating and missing chunks of their learning. I didn't know how that was, you know, this ties back to what Mark was saying earlier. We don't have enough time in our day to give the students everything that they need. You know, pacing and whatnot. So how are we going to be addressing that? Because this really is, it's so important now a day is to, to be, you know, multilingual.
Are we going to have that conversation tonight?
No, we don't have to have it tonight. I just wanted to see, you know, how we were looking at, you, you, you can table that, put a pin in it and we can come back to it in October or whenever, just curious.
I, I think tabling it is the appropriate thing to do. And I am hoping that someone has an art or music wonder.
It's funny, I was going to, Cody had a question, but then I was going to say, Laura, you have to come up here and give me your highlights because you're, actually your presentation was very good on the video. And I just feel like I don't have a good question for you. And I don't know why, because there was so much substance to your, in the video.
Thank you. I was asked to cut it down. It would have been 40 minutes if I kept going. I like to give you the whole picture because oftentimes you don't know the nitty-gritty. You get to see the product, which is always like the, the fun part of it. But we focus obviously on the process more so than what we result in the end. So there was a lot of work going on. I think the one, one piece of work that actually stuck out to me and I was really, really proud of is my elementary band team and the work that they did on their, their assessment. So we built a really great screener for the kids coming in and an end of year, which was fabulous. But what they noticed throughout the year, they realized that the skills we were measuring on the end, we didn't have a perfect roadmap. And any of you, if you've ever played an instrument, if you look into a lesson book, they give you these random skills so you can start on page two and you can't go to three, then four, then five. It's not sequential. They pull one skill and then they don't revisit it until like page 30. So what we did, we said, okay, if, if we're not going in this like sequential mode, we need a better roadmap for ourselves to make sure that we're measuring midway. And how should we do that? The creative people thought, we don't want one test, we want to give options. So we said, the student can choose what they want to demonstrate, the skills that we're looking for on any exercise that they want. The teacher could choose or the teacher could do a combination of both. So if I feel like I'm, I'm an outstanding student on the G major scale, I'm going to pick a song that's in G major because it has the same format for my instrument. And we thought that it gave an opportunity for kids to show us what they know, still measure all the skills. And we don't have to say everyone has the same benchmark. Very proud of the work that they did. Then when they chose the benchmark, I was like, is this not too hard? Then when they chose the benchmark, I was like, is this not too hard? And they were like, no, we really think that having a group discussion when we get back to school with the entire crew, we can then assess if this piece is really what we're looking for. And the team agreed, and I I was the shocked one. So it was really nice to hear them make a really collaborative decision and give our kids choice on how to to measure or demonstrate what they've learned so far. Very proud of them. So that was the biggest piece of work. And then the other big haul that we did is our electronic music classes. So we took a lot of work this, I mean, Barbara Freeman and now Jason Paulus, both of them have been outstanding teachers. It was time for us to really embed the technology and the music theory strands from our standards. Marry them both because, I mean, we're getting really good results. The products are coming out outstandingly, and we want to make sure that it's representative of all the standards between those two strains of, uh, music construction. Anytime. Yeah, it's an outstanding studio. If you haven't had an opportunity to go, I mean, it's it's really unique. And then my art teachers in elementary, they've been also very aware of, you know, all the, all the standards and the music standards are all the same for music, art, technology. All of them are the same anchor standards. So it's easy for us to stray and say, oh, are we really hitting standard number seven at some point in the articulation of our programming? So what the art teachers did from K through five, we went through, we made sure that we were hitting every single standard. If I started in kindergarten dot to five, grade five with detail and a mixed medium. And then we wanted to make it kid friendly because our standards are really like up here. So they wrote ICAN statements for every single grade level to make sure that teachers are checking in and to use it as a reflective tool at the end of each unit. So like all good usable materials that align back to our standards and and so specific that we feel confident measuring what kids can do.
I'm just questioning, because the the stand, if you're kind of creating these standards and what if you got, I mean, you know, what's the evolution of the process if you get there and say, you know what, we made it too complicated? Or maybe these right weren't the right ones to do? How do the teachers and you adjust that? Because music's a little, I mean, it's they're showing it's a little bit very different than like math or reading. So how do you evolve in that?
We think about the medium we want to use. So as we, as we think about the skills we want to measure, we think of all the different media we want to use to measure it. But we need to make sure we touch point in all the different types of media. So skill, so teach, so students are prepared to demonstrate using a particular set of skills to measure the same standard. Does that make sense? So I'm going to measure the same standard in a 3D piece of artwork or maybe a 2D piece of artwork. With my 2D piece of artwork, I'm looking at the principles of drawing versus the actual materials and tools used to create sculpture, like a wire or using clay. All different skills, particularly the medium, measure the same standard. Cody?
Just on the theme of measurement, what is the, um, when you look at, I know we kind of list accomplishments, but those are really changes that we're making. And I think whether they're an accomplishment or not, kind of is if they have some sort of positive impact in a measurable way. How do you think about how to measure if these things actually produce positive changes? I know some of them are, you know, some of the changes, like going back to pre-COVID ways or whatever, those are softer. But some of these probably are measurable. I was curious how you think about that.
Great question. And and what I would say is this, um, there's no single variable that we could probably tease out because of all the different things that a teacher does to impact learning or the progression of learning. But when we influence a change in our curriculum, what we expect to see is a rise in the overall scores on the standardized assessment. So everything drives back that through line to the standardized assessment results and a student's growth in that area. Does that make sense? I I mean, it's it's kind of a gray area because you you change curriculum that should influence student outcomes and improve performance over time.
Do you guys ever think about doing rolling out the curriculum change just in buckets and actually tested between different? Like do you one year sample in twenty five percent of the classes or something?
I don't know that we would do it that way, but you could do when when you're influencing a change and you want to really kind of isolate variables, you could roll out a new curriculum in kindergarten. And as the kids move to first grade, then add first grade and then add second grade. And then you can measure impact more specifically because it's now a new program versus an old program.
Just is there, you guys throw a report together or you look back?
Sorry, um, being new to this, do you, is there a report where you look at kind of, here are the changes we made last year, and here's how we're thinking about what's working or what isn't?
I don't think we have a specific report. But I would imagine that within the narrative of our overall academic achievement report, we do look at how our our curriculum changes have influenced student performance. So that's why the October report is is pretty meaty.
Mike, will some of the strategic stuff relate to this?
Yeah. So, um, if I'm on the website, right, so I see the, um, I just want to go back to the, I'm going back to the click thing. Because in all honesty, because I know this is, um, a concern around the community around, um, the transparency of the curriculum and students and the universality. So I really appreciate the point about if sixth grade at Eastern is learning the same thing and social studies is sixth grade at Western and Central. And I think that's that's terrific. And we know that that's a a, um, a change that was needed and things like that. So they, we've got the K eight tab and you click in the click K eight and everything is right there. So when it comes to the high school, um, say, English nine, where you have different English teachers, the, um, or social studies and things like that. How, um, I don't see that on the website, but I'm going to be clicking in the wrong place. The, um, how accessible is, um, that same level of information when we're in grades nine and twelve? Or is that still something that we're we're building out?
It's on the GHS website.
Okay.
Built the same way. And you should be able to access it. I would like to have it put on the the front webpage. And that's my goal for this year is to make sure that we're able to get it there so that it is all pre-K, twelve plus is on the front page so you can get to it.
Well, I was just going to say to to Cody's point about trying, uh, different, different, you know, newer curriculum, trying it in different ways in different classes. We used to offer pilot programs within our district here. So I think Glenville, Mark tested out a math pilot at one point, right? So, I mean, and it it went well, but it it caused things to be very disjointed. You bring in a math pilot, um, in one school or a language arts pilot in another. And then you didn't have students across districts, across the district, learning the same types of skills in the same types of ways. And they were still all matriculating upwards. And so that's part of the reason, I think, I mean, and I can't speak directly because I'm not an educator, but it was one of the things that we consistently were asking for, which was consistency across grade levels and then vertical and, you know, vertical and horizontal alignment. Because, you know, you had little Freddie, uh, you know, in in one school and little Suzie in another. And they were learning different, they were learning the same math in very different ways. And then as they matriculated upward, it they just had different bases. I'm just going to use math as an example, but and so I I think that was why the district made the decision not to to do pilot programs. And I could be wrong, but.
No, you're right. And and actually, a good example of how you can onboard in a systematic faction is the way that we onboarded foundations. We started in kindergarten and then we added it to first grade. So, um, by doing so, you're building, um, a foundational skill that a child from kindergarten can carry over into first grade. One of the challenges that we often have to deal with is code switching. So for example, a teacher, and we don't do this anymore in math because now we're all using the same language. But if a student hears a a teacher use a particular methodology for understanding a concept, and then next year a teacher uses a very different, that code switching really sets children back. And so you, there's nothing wrong with uniformity. There's nothing wrong with consistency. And it's not taking away teacher ownership or or teacher autonomy. It's just creating and limiting the variables that we can then study to determine whether or not the materials we're putting in front of kids is having a a significant positive lasting impact.
Um, did everyone from your team speak? I feel like we missed one and you're new. And so I feel like.
But I, but I will say, and and why not? Let's put her on the spot. I I did task Kim, and she doesn't have many more weeks in than Jeffrey, to to stay vigilant on the updates from the state. So do you want to give us a little bit more detail from your from your viewpoint and your conversations with the people at the state?
Yeah. So Mark had done a very eloquent job. And, um, I've been kind of monitoring everything that we're talking about. I know, you know, everyone's hearing about the science of reading and it's all over the news and it's all over, you know, every, everything that we read about literacy and across the country. And people are are really paying attention to it. And it's it's an exciting time because we're really looking at a body of research in the area of literacy that has been over years and years that we've known about the best ways to teach reading. We have the National Reading Panel from from twenty, from two thousand that that identified the five areas of reading that we really need to focus on. And now our state has has done a really nice job of of making that a priority. So while I'm anxiously awaiting like you are, um, I I think giving them time to evaluate and, um, recommend things that will cover phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension and fluency, which are our five major. While still screening, I hear you keep talking about this dyslexia screening, which is inherent in why we need a universal screener that that will not only give us the information we need and flag kids early, but also give us meaningful data to then, what Mike's, what Mike was talking about before, give our teachers actionable information to then be able to intervene early with really important skills. So Mark did a great job. I mean, there's not much more. There is a reading leadership panel that has been meeting. All of the information is on the state website. If anyone wants direct links to the Senate bill or the vetting process of the universal screeners or, um, the vetting process that they're going through. A little bit more detail is what they've, they they keep saying they've, the reason it's taking so long is they've had fifty submissions from districts, um, and from publishing companies to, for their products to be considered to hit all those areas that we spoke about. So they had, they're saying they're going through each submission twice. And some of the submissions are duplicates. So you can imagine how long that that is taking. But I think we we've gotten some word that we should know by the end of September. So I'm really excited to kind of get those committees together, get teachers looking at the materials and really find a really nice universal screener that's going to companion with what they're asking, which also is going to hopefully companion with some of the really great things that our teachers have been doing. I mean, being in the fourth year of this foundations rollout is really exciting. Getting third grade teachers talking about phonics and phonemic awareness, which hasn't been on their radar maybe in the past. And the kids have this robust understanding of what is, what is an open syllable? What is a closed syllable? What is a, what is a brev? What is a macron? Like all these very inherent, explicit, systematic ways of learning how to read, which we know through the science of reading that that is the best way to explicitly teach reading and how to read. We have to work on our comprehension and that's what we're hoping to kind of pair in after. So I'm really excited. I'm sorry, I don't have much information. I'm on the edge of my seat too. But, um, I'm I'm looking forward to working with all of you this year.
Cody?
I'm just curious, how much, um, of the like Teachers College Whole Language Reading Style is left in the in our school system? Now, if the answer is more than zero, how long will it take? How long will it take you to eradicate it?
It's more than zero. There are, there, you will see the fingerprints of of TC in the units that we currently have. But again, as I mentioned earlier, we identified last year in our curriculum management plan that that was a vulnerability and it needed to be addressed. The state is accelerating our ability to do that.
What does the state do to allow you to do that? Just changing the to.
So within our curriculum management plan, we were going to start taking, um, full assessment of what we currently have. And then next year, start the identification process. We need to do the identification now based on the recommendations from the state and implement next fall at this time. So it accelerates by a year. So this time next year, the units that we're currently using, it's highly likely we will not be using.
Yeah, we need to make it, we make, we need to make a decision and present our proposal to the state, not only for a universal screener that will be, um, K through three. We also need to present, um, the curricular model pre-K through three, um, that meets all of the standards and the criteria at the state level.
Just my primitive understanding of this, is it, is a simple way to think about it that the state requirements right now include stuff that is Teachers College or TC curriculum?
This is a new law based on a Senate bill that was passed in June of twenty twenty one. And based on that, they've made a Reading Leadership Council that has gotten together to not only look at the types of early screening. Really, it came forward because we were, we were missing kids with dyslexia nationwide until they were older. And we know that if we intervene early with these students, that we can, we can get them reading. So the universal screener is one part of that bill. And then the curricular models is is part of that too. There, before it was just based on the standards, as long as 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 you could prove that you were teaching to the standards, then that was the only, the only requirement for curriculum models prior. But now we're taking a really hard and fast look at what we know about the body of research, what everyone is tagging the science of reading. Now we know better, so we're going to do better.
But was part of the requirements for the standards, like, um, uh, were there things in the standards that went against the science of reading that were restricting us? Or is it just our own process that we have to go through to?
It's our own process and in what we, through self-discovery and through conversations with teacher, there were just key components that were lacking. So we didn't, we didn't buy the TC units of instruction. They were homegrown, but they were modeled off of TC. I think part of the problem when you go the homegrown route is that there's a certain level of trust that what you've created is going to meet the needs of students. And that's why we've taken an alternative route. And we've hired expert curriculum writers for middle school to make sure that we have people with incredible expertise in these areas to provide us with the resources that we know are appropriate and aligned to state and national standards. And I'll give you another example. So, um, social studies framework came out in two thousand and fifteen. And right at the top of the document, it says, we provide you with a framework, but we 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 acknowledge that all local districts have local control of how you interpret the frameworks. And then you have to create your own curriculum to align. And that's what we did with our our units of study and reading. This is a much better approach. So I'm actually excited that the the state has invested this much time and energy in in providing us with a a higher level of guidance.
Yeah, this might be one of the few examples of where where state oversight intervention is actually thoughtful and a good thing. But it's probably why, hold on, but it's why. And I think it's why, the reason why is because it didn't really come from the state. It was a grassroots, I know. It was a grassroots, uh, national grassroots, um, effort that's popped, gone throughout all states. So I knew you, I did that good rise on you.
Yeah, the trains run on time in North Korea, so.
I thought it's true. The one thing, um, the one thing I caution us to to think about as we go through this conversation of, oh, and the other thing is, I think it's also fair to say that TC is not going to be on the state approved list. The, um, the one thing I'd caution us to think about is when we can consider comprehension, which we've kind of been using TC as code for, we have comprehensive, we have TC issues. But I think the one thing I think we need, um, I'd caution us to think about is when we're talking about comprehension, as as, as you know, um, so much of comprehension is background now. So it's not, this is not an ELA conversation, right? This is an across subject conversation that we have to have when we're talking about how we're solving, um, our complex, our comprehension curriculum issues.
Well, and it and it bleeds nicely into the conversation we need to have about instructional time. Because if you can take a more multidisciplinary approach, you can create efficiencies. But we're a little ways away from going down that road.
Gosh, I was kind of hoping we could add that to the agenda, but. I can't believe I have to ask why, uh, invite Gordon to speak because I don't think anyone's ever had to ask him to speak, but is he?
And he's been incredibly obstinate all day with me that he did not want me to call him to the microphone. But since you've asked, I think we should.
How would you have him in a room and he doesn't say something?
I mean. You are taking a bit of a risk.
I guess I should be offended, but I'm not. Um, hi, everybody. So what do you want to know?
I I kind of feel like just reading one of your emails that you. I I kind of feel like just reading one of your emails that you sent to parents allowed, but that's probably not.
Probably not appropriate, no.
Well, I I should preface this by Gordon's not here in his principal capacity. When we really took a hard look at the ELA work that was coming up, we really felt like we needed a K eight ELA coordinator who was dedicated to that work. And since we have administrative liaisons already in existence overseeing our PE and health, and that's Jennifer Bensavango K five and Tom Healy six eight, and that model is working well. I came up with the thought of why couldn't we do that for social studies six eight? And I would love to oversee K five social studies. So we are sharing the responsibilities of social studies content K eight. And so Gordon could answer any questions that you have about six eight social studies.
Anything you want to know. Yeah, I know. I know.
Why? I don't. I don't know. My my daughter had a really good teacher at Central last year on social studies. I don't know if you know her.
I do. She's my better half, yes.
No, just enlighten us with something. I mean, you always. Anything.
Do you maybe want to sing the praises of your of your summer?
You do that. Yeah. So. The task that we were given this year, the the curriculum market alluded to this. It was separate from the teachers. So the teachers have been very used to doing their own thing in social studies, and we know this district why. So there's had to be a lot of massaging as this was rolled out to the staff. So we spent a lot of time this summer kind of making this teacher friendly work. So we took the the work of the curriculum writers and Todd White and his team. And we, the teachers spent time teacherizing it, it's not a real word. But just making it teacher friendly, creating those teacher facing documents, creating the the slideshows that they can present. And that's all now in a one page. So they have it all aligned. So you have the curriculum writers work, you have the teacher work, you have the student facing documents, you have the assessments, you have the pacing guide. It's all right in one piece right now. So I think it's we're ready to roll on. This is year one of this. We teased it a little bit last year, but it's really year one. We're very clear of our expectations, both Kim and I about this is a nonnegotiable. You can't not do this work. But we know it's as any curriculum is first year out, it's a work in progress. So we have plans to meet every two and a half, three months to revisit what we just taught. Fix it, for lack of a better word, align it and then move forward. So that's kind of the work for this year. How did you, Mark? You told me you were afraid to let me speak.
You're done.
Thank you.
But Karen's going to throw you a question, so.
Well, now, I mean, there's some incredible. I was actually just going to point out that one of the things I didn't get a chance to say was the incredible work that I saw that was done. On social studies, especially when you're talking about the nine ninth to twelfth grade work and redoing a lot of the AP coursework and. Pacing guides because so much of the AP work has been changed by the board of, you know, the AP board. It. It's very hard for us to handle getting all that material to our students when we start later than a lot of the schools like in the South and and out West. And so they they get a lot more in. So. I just wanted to say thank you for all that work because those students. Really work hard in a short window of time to get a lot in. So that was my big thank you. And I remember what I was gonna say earlier, which was in support of what. Mark was saying about the need for more interventionists, having visited quite a few schools on the first day of school. I know we have. And when we get to at some point, special education audit update, we have a lot more students with needs coming into our schools and and not just because of COVID and and in COVID slide. And so I I look forward to the October report for data to see how we can support those students if we do need more interventionists. We do need other type of support because that was one of the things that a lot of the feedback that I got from. Teachers and principals when I when I toured schools on the first day. So. But more importantly, I just really wanted to say thank you because it's such a nice opportunity to be able to look at so many smiling faces and the energy and joy that you clearly had in doing this work. Is coming through from from hearing all of you speak. And if I can see it on your faces, I know our students will be able to see it in the work that they're being given and our teachers will. See it in the the way they're delivering it to the students and it's and I saw it on the first day of school. Just that joy and excitement. And, you know, Joe and I were talking about it. We were. We went to a couple of places together. So what you've done this summer is already being positively reflected in our classroom. So thank you.
Yes, Cody.
Gordon, I'm just curious. How much when you guys are looking at the social studies curriculum, I feel like with all the woke political stuff, whatever, social studies is probably more. Maybe easier to have things like that than math. Do you guys talk about that at all? And when you're looking at the curriculum or is that part of the thought process or interested in your views on that? Especially your views because I know you're a straight shooter.
Yeah. You know, the curriculum was was written by others. So we were just so this was not our work per se. We were kind of cleaning it up. So there was it was user friendly. But yeah, the you probably were the vetting document that they were. Okay, the vetting document. I'm not spilling any beans here. You are now. So, you know, one of these you want to look at is you can't teach social studies without teaching controversial topics. You just cannot. But it's it's how those topics are presented is what's really most important. So there's a so the purpose of the rubric is that what you put in front of kids is as unbiased as possible. And that there are multiple perspectives presented, and that's kind of what our focus has been. You you can't just talk about dress code and skateboards, you know, you got to go deeper than that. It's a middle school level. You know, that being said, you know, what is controversial to one person is not controversial to somebody else. So it's it's finding that balance. It's not easy. And we have this conversation on a regular basis. But one of the things they're doing is that they're they're putting materials in front of me, which is maybe dangerous, but they're putting materials in front of me and they're just, you know, what do you think? Can we use this? And then we're having that conversation about, does it meet the standards? Is it is it part of what was presented? You know, is it controversial? Is is a source reliable? We talked through all those things. And if it's a yes, yeah, then we're going to put it in front of kids. Does that answer?
If you just as one follow up, like pretend you've got one, you know, progressive parent who really thinks things should be taught one way and. One conservative parent who thinks things should be taught another way, like what would you say to either of them to say, hey, look? You know, here's why you should be comfortable with the way we develop and evolve the curriculum. Like, like, what would be your explanation to either one of them?
Well, I think, you know, we're not. We're not catering to a left or right curriculum, right? We're we're teaching to the standards. The standards are not controversial. You know, the materials we use, we have to be careful about what we select. But at this, you know, again, you're going to talk about uncomfortable topics. You're going to talk about slavery. You're going to talk about, you know, perhaps the Holocaust. You're going to talk about things that are uncomfortable. That's okay. It's how it's presented. I think that's really what's most important, not as much as what is presented. I think that's where the issues arise. If there's a left or right leading presentation, that's problematic.
I I have a question on that. What? How how would you manage if one presentation is leaning to your not to your satisfaction? If you feel that somebody's presenting it in a biased way, how would you manage that?
Well, I think I think there's two. I think two parts of that. Is it is the materials they're using or what they're saying? So I think if it's the materials they're using, we have district approved materials. And if we if we're going to deviate from that, we have to go through this vetting process. So if you're going to take something that we haven't approved, we better be sure that it's not, as you stated. How it's presented, I mean, that's. As a tricky one, like I'm not in every room all the time, right? So we don't know. You're getting a twelve year old's perspective on what they walked away with, but that has to mean something. A kid walked away uncomfortable based upon a lesson. We can't just ignore that. So that's, you know, we'll have to take it case by case.
Karen.
So, yeah, I was going to focus in on the the how component, right? I know that. Dr. Jones has talked a lot in the past about, you know, having, you know. You know, education freedom in order to present the how. But how but now that the how maybe come very controversial depending upon who's in the, you know, who who the parents are and how. What their student is coming home and and saying what they're learning. The question is, how do you control that from, say, the tone from the top as to what? What the constraints on the how are, right? Does every teacher know? And is there an general understanding throughout the district of how that material should be presented?
Yes. So. When the curriculum measures were pretty specific about not just what the resources are and what the standards are, what the learning targets are, but here is a way to present it. We give teachers flexibility in what that looks like because you have to. You have different kids in front of you. You know, their back back skills you have to fill. There's other things that have to happen, but there is a map that they can follow. But we're talking about how we're talking about am I doing a jigsaw versus another type of, you know, a Socratic seminar? We're not talking about the materials you're going to use being more one way or the other. Does that make sense?
It does. And and that that's helpful, but obviously there's also the delivery component, which is why which I was trying to get to. It's not as if we're going to look at. I I understand the difference that you're trying to describe in the how, but I was getting more at as to the delivery method, right? And the conversation that is had, right? The teachers have to have freedom in order to get the material across and the students that are in front of them are all learning in different. Ways. The question is how, you know. I want to be comfortable in addressing concerns that are coming in from parents that there is a general message going out to teachers as to stay staying in. Staying in their lane, so to speak. Maybe that's the best way of of doing that to say so that we don't get outside those boundaries. That are the lightning rods on both sides. Do you see what I'm?
I totally hear you saying. And here is my message to the staff. It was really simple. No one is paying you to put your values on their kids. That's not what we're here for. We're here to present the content. We're here to have discussions. They may be controversial discussions, but it's not about taking a side. They should know where you stand. And that was very clear. And, you know, they understand that. I mean, this is a tough time to be a teacher. You're under the microscope. I don't think people are going to go, who knows what people are going to do, but but they're they're well aware of what the consequences might be if if you choose a different path.
I I thought it might be nice just for either for one of you to to be able to answer how we started the school year. We talked about the vetting rubric at Leadership. We talked about the new regulation that we have, and we really, one thing that was missing, I think, for us was defining what does academic freedom mean? And we've made it very clear that what academic freedom is not the ability to teach whatever you want, whenever you want. And I think there was a lot of misunderstanding in the district for, I could say, decades for a long time. That that was what our belief was for academic freedom. And I think we've really spent the time, and I don't know if one of you want to add to that, but. We made sure all the principals addressed it in every building so that we're all starting the year, I feel like with the same understanding and a better vocabulary of language.
Yeah, you you said at all of our faculty meetings, you know, we were asked to present the vetting rubric, present the revised as a board policy procedure about what academic freedom means, and we all did that. So we're, you know, we're really, we've been very consistent and clear about what you can and cannot do within a classroom.
Joe.
I'm going to take advantage of your reputation here of you being forthcoming and speaking your mind. So my question is basically, there's. How can you advise or recommend that we present the non bias to a community of people that don't want to hear that there's not a bias in presentation? Give me a give me a bit of a pep talk on how I could talk to somebody who might feel that no matter what. They're being told or what they see or what they hear that there's there's something going on that that needs to be explained to them that might not be going on. How would you? How would you explain that?
I think I would point them to the curriculum document that they're all working from. And ask them to present evidence of this, like this. There's always this, you know, this is happening all over the place. Well, what is happening? Where is it happening? Show me a document. Because I just don't think they exist. I mean, there may be, and that I'm not going to misspeak. The people, teachers have made mistakes. But from a district perspective, you're not going to find a slew of evidence that we are going in a certain direction. I just don't think you will. And I would just ask them to, you know, okay, hear what you're saying, but where do you see it? Was your kid brought home? What does your kid say? Because I just think it's 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 all rumor mill stuff. That's my take.
Thank you.
I'm actually happy that I put somehow put you on on the spot, but then Cody really opened.
I don't hear that often, but thanks.
No, it's good. No, I mean, it's an important conversation. I mean, I actually, as my son studies for a US history test tonight, I I went through the material. I looked at it and I sort of said, is this how I learned US history? Turns out it hasn't changed much. But, yeah, but but it's, yeah, it's important to like, keep having the conversation and I just found US history fascinating. I'm quite enjoying this AP class more than I perhaps the average parent, but. So any anymore? I think that's really helpful.
I would simply close with this. I firmly believe we have an obligation, people in this room, to provide teachers with the appropriate resources and materials so that they can be successful when they're in front of students. And I stand by that.
And there was a lot of great work done, and I I agree with everyone. I think it's great to have consistency. Across the grades, across the middle schools. I think that's something that PTAC I know had been sort of really pushing for a long time and it's just great to see. So.
And one of the things that we're really working at is making sure that we ensure we have a pre K through twelve plus system. And we really want that to be from the beginning all the way through to the end so that when our children leave our Greenwich Public Schools. They are ready to go out and rule the world and do a good job with it.
So, yeah, I think that should be in schools tomorrow. Yeah. Are we done with this topic? Because then I think we should let them go home, except for Gordon. We're going to keep him all night.
Thank you for flipping it. This is this is much better for us. So we will continue to flip if if that's what I'm getting this.
The discussion lasted ninety minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you. And welcome. Welcome to the tuning people. Thank you so much for joining. Oh, gosh, sorry about that. See, I didn't. I didn't log on to my computer, so I didn't appreciate that. Sorry about that. Okay. Oh, well, we'll get them next time. Um, moving on. Come on, move on. We're moving on to enrollment. All right, now we're going to numbers enrollment.
I'm sorry, I don't ordinarily put my foot up, but I have an injury on my leg and I have to put it up. I had a fight with a dishwasher. Uh, yeah.
Oh, seriously, you know. Exactly. It's flammable. Okay, do you want want to do you want to present this? You just want us to jump in with questions and?
Jump in.
It's pretty. It's pretty self explanatory, right?
And this is just preliminary. We get the final one in October.
October first is when we get the official one.
Yeah, because I noticed you kept updating on board docs because it's probably changing every day, right?
Yes. Well, this is as of November, November, no, September first, and we did update it from September seventh, I believe, on Tuesday we updated it.
So the headline is that the numbers are up.
The headline is the elementary is up.
You got that?
Elementary is up. We are up ahead, which is excellent news.
And. Sorry.
Ninety students.
Ninety students.
Plus students at the elementary level.
And it's and the focus being in K, right? The biggest differential. So that is a nice, long term trend.
Yes, it is.
And we typically only go up between now and October. Am I correct? Because we're still counting.
Correct.
All right. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over. Wow, it's a tough one. Joe. All right, Laura.
I would just like to say that I see a very impressive increase at New Leb. Which is a very nice, new shiny school and an example of if you build it, they will come. Well, I think we we might have co authored that line. Anyway, so I just wanted to point that out and say rah rah.
Joe.
Sorry, mine's a sad note. The, when I first joined the board, there's a list of things which I I made. And one of the things that I on my list. Was, and I had this information and and I hope it's been a lot of years now behind me since I've had students while working at the schools. But I was privy to a fair amount of information that there's a there's a fair number of our students that don't live in in Greenwich. And I knew that from the close relationships one develops when one serves as a coach. And. My question, I guess, because it's in this topic and it's on my list that got put off because of COVID and trying to work on things to make sure we. We just kind of kept the wheels on as best we could. I'd like a better understanding on how we check. These uh, these these students that I happen to know a large number don't live in our community. And how do we check on such things?
We do. We do residency checks every year. So we do have that. That is, Tom Bobkowski checks that every year to make sure that. We still have those people at where they should be. We do get reports from secretaries, school secretaries saying. Oh, we heard that a student really has moved, so we go out and we do check their residency. We do have tuition students. We have many town employees who send their children to our Greenwich Public Schools and they pay tuition. But we do check on that every year and throughout the year with the residency checks.
Well, on that, on that now, Tom actually goes out and. Well, on that, on that now, Tom actually goes out and visits, he checks on homes and stuff. Okay, maybe I get a better understanding on that one because as I said, I had information because I had such close relationships with my students that many of them did not. And whatever system we had in place, certainly there was a fair amount that slipped through the crack. Number two, you had talked about the secretaries do checks. What motivation do the secretaries have in order to find students that, that are not within the town?
Space within our buildings and making sure that students are getting the supports that they need. And if we do not quote unquote own a student because of their residency, then we should not be having to support them in our public school system. They need to go back to their own system.
I'm going to say this to try to be as fair as I can without sounding argumentative, but that doesn't sound like motivation. It sounds like an answer. And I don't mean to offend you by saying that. You're being asked questions, so of course you have to give answers. So, but it doesn't seem like it's a system that rewards the schools from actually finding somebody that does not belong in the schools. And, and I'm all about helping kids that need help and all about gray area and leaning towards overlooking what, what might help the kid rather than helping other things. But in this case, we, in the position I now have, I've got an obligation to make sure that I look at the system. Having been inside the system and having that knowledge and hearing the answers you're presenting to me. And I don't mean to be, as I said, argumentative, it's not my style. But I think we have to take a look at creating incentive. I know that we were celebrating the numbers going up and that was a good thing. But unfortunately, this is something I just, I came across and I wanted to, I wanted to discuss a long time ago. And just the opportunity never came up because it took a while since I've been involved to have normality within, within the system.
So I will say different districts manage this in their own way. I was in growing districts probably for the bulk of my career. So we did a residency check every single year on every single grade. And I think Anne said that experience, we traditionally have not done that in Greenwich. Irritates people, that's for sure. Because they have to provide, you know, their original utility bills and do all of that. You know, the board could ask us to, to this, this year, if you want to do a residency check across the district, it would take us a little while, but we'd be happy to do that. Usually you will pick up some students, but one thing I want to say too is often people don't understand the complexities of residency. And we can have a family that is here, they become homeless. We saw this during COVID. We still have the responsibility to educate them in Greenwich when that happens. We also have a lot of unusual custody situations. Their primary custody is here in Greenwich. Their other parent lives in Stanford, but they might be two weeks here or two weeks there. Somebody sees them, you know, getting picked up and going to Stanford. Those generally, most people usually tell, tell us and call and because they don't like it. If they think we're educating individuals that don't live here. And generally, we can either look in our student information system. If there's something unusual with the family structure. Or we do, I'm going to call the surveillance to actually find out where are they getting dropped off? Are they getting dropped off at a strange bus stop? Because, you know, maybe they canceled their lease or something happened. And Tom Bobkowski is really doesn't, he's pretty tough. But certainly if you wanted us to do the whole district check, we could do it. It would just take a while.
As you might or might not know, you know, I've been quite involved with the DCF on situations like this. Also, the probate judge, several times we've been made illegal guardian on the situations you just described. So I'm aware of the unique situations where I would always push towards the wellbeing of the child during situations like that. But as I said, I'm not asking, well, I guess what I'm asking is for us, I think we have to tighten the screws a little bit. Not asking you to do anything, but just maybe get back to us if, well, everyone else agrees that, that maybe we look at the plan and create an incentive based plan, a plan that actually motivates people to act. Because I said, I do have been involved in many degrees with the students in our schools and in many different ways. I do know that there are a fair amount of students that, that were able to circumvent whatever defensive strategy we have in place right now. So I don't want to rat anybody out. I'm not going to be that person. So I'd rather have a system that more defends against this more base. I would say probably suggesting something of a plan of the new kids possibly coming in. There are many of that here are here and there's a lot of gray areas. So I agree that I certainly don't want to. Absolutely, and I don't want to hurt a child or hurt a student. That's not what I'm about. But somehow maybe put a defensive plan up when they're coming in at the younger ages. We can look at it better. I'm not sure we have a good defense.
We actually do. We've had every new family when they come in, they have to either show us their original lease. They have to show us their closing papers on their home. They have to have the utility bills where they actually match the address. So.
We actually make them come in.
Well, Anne, you guys are giving me these answers, but I personally knew a whole bunch of kids that lived in, yes, a lot of them.
My husband, I just went through the process and my husband was like, seriously, you're on the board? And like, I was like, the process was crazy to prove that I lived here.
And it's done at multiple grade levels. It's not, it's not like you just enter once and never again.
Maybe one, one was.
From sixth, from fifth to sixth, from eighth to ninth. We have at those major levels who have to re up your residency. So we, we really do try to check every child that comes in. And as I say, their kids are, are pretty verbal about where they are, at least at the elementary level. At the, at the high school level, yes, there are some students that probably.
My experience is the high school.
And, and my guess is I know what, what residency that would have been. So we also have done some work on that last year and we will continue this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've just had a curiosity, how many, like at the high school in a year, how many times do we uncover somebody? Is this like a, that rarely ever happens or?
I'm not aware of it being an enormous problem for us, but let me check with Tom Bobkowski just to double check. Because he just reaches out to the family and it's a very private, like you gotta leave.
Because I'd imagine if it's like, if the number is zero every year, then that's probably, there's probably something that can be done to then we're missing something, you know?
And we have actually found people that should not be here and we do tell them that they have to go. And we formally have them withdrawn.
Ms. Kowski.
No, I know a couple of years ago, there was a big push again. It was probably maybe six or seven years ago at this point, we did everybody again. There was this concern that people were walking across through from Portchester across the border. And we and so everybody had to re up again, not just at the kindergarten level. So I'm just wondering if there's a, perhaps we can reevaluate to determine how often we want to do this. I think if you were to do every grade every year, I would not be happy. And that would just be, and the cost element is certainly attributable to that.
Budgetary implications.
Yeah, but I would suggest perhaps it's worth just having a clean slate and doing something. Maybe it's every five years or however we want to do it. Because I was made aware of during the COVID time period, and I don't know if it still exists. But I was informed that because of the fact of COVID, people had decided, well, we're going to move. We can get, we can go to Stanford or we can go to another area where we can get more bang for our buck with respect to the house. But we're going to still, we're going to, we could just drive the kids back and go to Greenwich. And I was informed multiple times that that was happening. So I'm just curious whether or not it might make sense now that COVID is over, at least to a certain extent. It's over, thank you. I didn't want to be the only one on one side to say that, but it's over. To, to re up and renew to just to reconfirm that now that everybody's back in school, it's full time, everybody's going back to the office and work that we have now decided. Nobody's driving their kid, you know? We've got a clean bill of health as it relates to population.
Well, I, I think there's an, I think it's back to if there's a suspicious situation, right? Because I mean, at a lot of the elementary schools, right? They, the staff knows the parents, they, you know, there's kind of a little more of a connection. I think to your point, like, maybe the high school is a little more of a free for all than the elementary schools. You know, because the people aren't really watching, not that it needs to be done, but I think I think we've got to be careful about when you're talking about incentivizing. I don't think we want to create like a rat out culture. No, 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 no.
I don't think that's right. I, I, I see nothing wrong with whistleblowers. Whistleblowers are.
I think people are inherently whistleblowers already. The fact that we're all talking about this means that people are talking about it. And if, and if you're a parent who believes a wrong is being done to the school system, you're going to get in touch with the school, right? Because they can do it anonymously.
You can always send us anonymously to my office or to Tom Bobkowski's office and we will check it.
Right, it's personal. That's where, when you're dealing with a child who maybe your kid's playing with another kid and you find out that the kid lives in Portchester or in Stanford. And you're not going to really rat the nice kid out that's playing with your kid. It's, it's more incentive where the administration, where a building to actually have some motivation to make sure they do it. That, that's all, not really incentive where if they say.
We spend a lot of money on every kid who comes through the doors. Isn't that our incentive enough?
But I'm not saying direct incentive.
Yeah.
No, no incentive for some structure where, and not pay a thousand dollars for every kid caught, nothing like that, of course, no. But somehow some luxury might have been.
I was going to say this enrollment report went in a very strange direction. So I was going to try to.
I have a question more like on.
Okay, because I had a question, go ahead, Ms. Tony.
Um, I just want to talk about the number of elementary school sections because I know we based our budget on the fact that we were going to have, I think, five fewer sections. And I don't have that number in front of me. Is that how the numbers bore out?
Yes, we have five fewer sections this year, so we continue to go down. However, what you see in the, if you've been looking at one that's not color, it's, you'll see those gray. We have six sections that are right there. So what that tells us is when we're building our budget for next year, it is highly unlikely we're going to be able to do what we've done the last couple of years where we were able to reduce sections. So, and, and if you remember, that's how we were able to fund like interventionists without increasing the budget. So it's going to put a little bit of pressure on the budget.
So just talking about, so talking about the kindergarten sections because while, while we're still talking about that, because I was looking at Riverside. The, because it was projected 45 and four sections. Is that, is that a typo or were we always expecting? Yeah, because that's a, it was like a 58% difference between projected and actual is the biggest overall gap. So I was wondering if.
Also, I can't imagine we planned to have 10 students per class.
Exactly. So I'm wondering if that's a.
Now, these are adjusted, so you're, what you're seeing on here are not what was, well, not what was projected on the section number. That's how many sections they have right now. Yeah, so I mean, we update that as we, if we have four sex, because we're watching all summer long to see if we have to move a teacher from one building to the other.
Projected is the number of students.
Right, I got you. So, but so we still stayed within the budgeted number of sections.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Why didn't we do three sections for the, the, what is it? Grade one Riverside, because that, that would have still had fewer students per class than the fourth and fifth grade. Oh, right.
See, you have to have 20, you can do, you know, it's supposed to go up 21.
Go ahead. No, it's okay.
Okay, so when we, when we're talking about enrollment is up, are we talking about up based on projected or based on last year?
So we, we plan our whole budget based on what's projected. And so our projections this year, we are up 90 students in K5 above our projected, what we expected to enroll.
But as far as our actual enrollment, if I'm, if I'm looking at last year's enrollment, actual numbers, we're still down. They, because I looked at the, the, the number last year was, at this time last year on the enrollment report was 8471. So if we're doing K, K to 12, now I'm looking at the same report, the same number in the same square.
It must be down because that's why we have fewer sections.
Right, okay. So I want to clarify that for the community to think like that. So when we're saying enrollment, enrollment is not up. Enrollment K to 12 is still down.
It's up versus the projections and therefore versus the budget. And that's what we, how we plan.
Got you.
You're also looking at, we're looking at numbers now that are the initial numbers. They go up between now and October always. And so what we're looking at is, if we looked at this in comparison to September from last year, I think it's pretty minimal. It's, it's less than 100 students different. I think the total, this year, the total was 8397. And last year in October number was 8413. So we're pretty close.
Eighty four seventy one.
Well, I had eighty four, well, I don't know what I was looking at, then I got to go back. But that's what I had written down here.
Again, yes, go ahead, Ms. Tony, I have another question.
Yes. The other thing that we're really watching, which you know, is that we watch those K5 sections, which we've been able to reduce. And what people often forget is this pre K number that continues to climb. And the pre K number, we will not, I don't think be able to maintain those 14 sections. I believe we'll hit the 15th section probably halfway through the year. And that again is with an adjusted ratio that we've done over the last, you know, couple of years. Yeah, I said Julian Curtis. Yeah.
What, what, the projections are as of when they were? What, like what, the projection was made when?
The projections, we make them every year as we're building the budget. We have an outside person who does that for us. We take our numbers as of October 1. And then he runs based off, you know, several different factors. And those projections will get plugged into the budget.
So these are based on like, like 11 months old? Or the projection is, is kind of 11 months old if it's based on October 1 last year? Yeah, 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 got it. And that's just what it's.
One other thing I'd like to note is that all of the central feeder schools are above the projections. Just had, I just had to say that.
But let's look at it to last year's numbers as Mike pointed out. So I don't want to send the lovely buzzword misinformation into the community on.
I think I was clear about the actual versus, you got the actual versus projected, didn't you? You did.
Okay.
Ms. Downey.
I don't know if this is Anne or Tony. I'm just because, you know, on first day I went to ISD. And it's kind of interesting because we have them, their actuals lower than projected. But the principal said they're full with a waiting list of 100 kids. So I guess my question is they're below what we projected, but they're saying they're full. How does, how does that math work?
Yeah, so ISD, as you know, is, is a challenge. It's a popular school. A lot of houses are, have been bought and sold there. Will probably continue to enroll, we anticipate throughout the year. So we have to save some seats for our new kids who move in. There's a lot of housing in that area.
This is just generally a query of mine, so it's not for us to do, I guess, as a school board. But I'd love to look at this versus real estate sales, maybe Jill can do this for me, of people that move from New York. And to see if this is actually the trend that we're seeing. I just would be truly intrigued, but I know that that's not the job of the school board, but maybe Jill. Okay, thank you. All right, Karen.
I was gonna say, I knew these numbers were generated, it shows on the first. So it'll be very interesting because I was gonna say, even walking the schools on the first day, I was watching as the secretaries, you know, and office assistants and stuff in the front were saying, they, they were having kids come in that were enrolling or speaking, I could hear them on the phone. They're talking, you know, like giving them information as to, you know, how to come, you know, if they had just enrolled or where they needed to come down. So, I mean, I, I mean, I was just listening to the number of students that were coming in. And I know, I, I think the biggest thing we're going to have to look at, like you said, is not just preschool, but it's also when we look at things between now and October, where the needs are. Because it's not just, you know, I know we talk about this often. Not every student is just a one, some are one and a half in regards of what it is that they need. It's not just a, it's not always just a tush and a seat. It's tush and a seat plus whatever else that they need. And I, you know, I, and that, you know, I think we can have a good idea of looking at kindergarten numbers, which are going up. The fact that, I know we added JC, which has 13 students there this year. But if you compare that to last year's numbers, just in October, we're already up 20 students. So it was even more than just adding that, that, that section at JC. So, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're finding ways to address the needs because between now and October, you know, if we have kids come into different schools that don't have, you know, you know, space in some of these sections, because we're already right on, you know, approaching guidelines in a couple of the elementaries, for instance. Just, you know, how, how we're going to sort of address some of those needs if we, if we need to.
And, and the next report in October will also.
And, and the next report in October will also include, bless you, the number of, you know, what we had last year with respect to pre-K and those that go into kindergarten. Because remember, we've been repeatedly seeing the trend that while our pre-K numbers were going up, we weren't seeing them translate in going into kindergarten. There was a disconnect between the numbers we saw in pre-K versus those going into kindergarten. And I just want to see how that trend is progressing, because that would also fuel into how we're looking at things in the future purposely for budgeting purposes, because is that trend now shifting, right? Because I, you and I had had this discussion before, and I pointed it out in a board meeting last year. It's, you know, everyone kept talking about, oh, how high our pre-K numbers are. And I looked at them as, well, if our pre-K numbers are X, why are our kindergarten numbers Y? And there was no explanation. So I'd like to understand and see where that trend is going and if it's reversing itself based upon numbers we're seeing now.
Okay.
I was gonna say, if you look at, I mean, I will say, if I, looking at the numbers from October of last year to now, our kindergarten numbers are up. We're at five ninety. Now it's at six thirty-one in kindergarten. So that's always positive. But, I mean, I haven't looked back at the trend from, you know, pre-K, that what rolled up, because you never know what, what, that's why I was saying, you don't know which years from pre-K they are, because it's three years, four years, and some stay a little longer, because I don't want to use the term red shirting, but some children are not ready and they're right on the cusp, but they stay a little longer.
Okay, so we see this again in October. And then it's be a part of your budget. I imagine you'll be looking at this at the budget committee often. Okay. With that, ready to move on? Okay. Superintendent goals. All right, so, I remember last year, we kind of made a laundry list of items. So I suspect you did your best to try to incorporate all of our thoughts, but this is info for all of us to sort of weigh in on and provide some guidance.
Yeah, I printed it hard.
Thank you.
So, based upon the goals, where would we see the specifics for, say, for example, academic achievement? And I would separate that out as something different than, say, goal number one, which is enhancing the process for curriculum development and implementation. My question goes specifically to, let's say, looking at last year's past assessments, what would be a goal as a spec, with respect to achievement for students?
So, maybe if I, yeah, I'll walk, I'll walk you through it a little bit. So if you start with goal one, that's really the curriculum development implementation goal. There are those seven items. When you're looking at item five, for instance, is increasing the performance year over year as provided through the growth analysis. And the state actually provides those two different growth scores for us. And whether or not we hit the target, and that report came out, you know, just a couple of weeks ago. And when we do our achievement report, you'll be able to see that again. And I think that's one I also had emailed the board on that little chart that was in, somebody did a story on it, which was great for us. But I'll walk through this, like, big ideas across the district. This is also the high school on number one, and the new big ideas that's been implemented for our high schoolers. So as we're really working, yeah, on the systemic focus, the daily lesson plans, you've heard, again, Gordon, talk about that. The systemic focus, are we rolling these materials out with fidelity? We are working on our writing this year for six eight. For number four, this is really about continuing to increase that parent information and access and what is on the web. Mark and I were in a discussion earlier today in that somehow as we do our agenda planning, we probably need to add an item for the team to be able to show you what's on the website. Because in that, so it was interesting when that came up tonight. I think a lot of people don't realize how much is actually there for parents. And that was a huge request in the original strategic plan, and the team's done a great job. Also, just looking at, I'll jump to six, the stronger support for preschool, as we've analyzed a lot of our data. And we are really, we've been doing a lot of work at looking at students who have been with us for five years or longer. And, and the reason we think that's really important is it tells us what we're doing, is it really working? If we've had children for five years, we should be able to see some success with our students. And if we're not, why not? And as we were doing that, we started looking at, well, some of these children have been with us for seven years. And if we're not seeing stronger results, is our pre-K really working? So we started a whole discussion. We have a new pre-K program coordinator this year as well. So the program coordinator has been connecting with Kim Palladino, who you met tonight. And we're actually rolling out foundations in the next couple of weeks for preschool. Because once we realized we have, we really haven't had any resource. It has not been a focus in the district where we've had any sort of district curriculum development work for preschool. And we feel like we've missed a real opportunity for early childhood. So we're excited about that. So that's something we're going to be working on.
Is that a, is that a pre-K version?
It is a pre-K version. So it's not long. It's very targeted for preschool. And, you know, we talked to our principals about it as well. The pre-K teachers were very receptive. I think they're excited that they're, they're going to also have resources now that they haven't had in the past. So. And then we're going to start a curriculum review of preschool for early intervention, because again, they haven't had materials, zero. And so they're going to go through the curriculum review cycle, just like they do with everything else. And they're working on getting that together. And that's, this was another discussion we were in earlier today in curriculum, is that we also, the pre-K is not showing up on our curriculum management plan. And it just never has, and it should be on there, because that really is the introduction to Greenwich Public Schools. So we're going to do some work there as well, so that the next iteration will have that reflected in the work we're doing for our earliest learners. The second goal is really the fidelity of implementation of all of our special education work. There's a ton going on there with that action plan. And you'll hear from Stacy in the coming weeks. I can't remember if it's the next board meeting or the one after, but she will be in front of you again to update you. And it's also looking ahead, where, as you know, we're already, you know, building the budget. And how are we going to assess programs budget and our future needs? What's working? What needs tweaking as we study all of our programs? And how are the new programs developing, the co-teaching, and all of those kind of programs that we talked about during the budget? Monitoring and evaluating, again, co-teaching, unique learner program, which those are the two that are at COSTCOB that we started this year. And how does that impact the budget next year? And if you remember, you guys were very excited about co-teaching and really asked, could it be expanded? We're going to really look at how it's working this year and probably have some sort of proposal for you next year. But again, it's overseeing all of that work that has to be done. Training in the I, new IP system that's required in Connecticut. And enhancing communication between Havemeyer and special education staff. And we're starting that this year. And that's, comes back to a lot of the work that we're doing with special ed, but also what you were just hitting on in the enrollment report is how do we distribute resources? This has not been an easy discussion in our district either. Because forever, it didn't matter whether you had two hundred students or five hundred students, you each just got a point five reading specialist. It didn't matter whether you were a Title I school, whether you were a school where kids walk in primarily at ninety-fifth percentile. You had the same resources and supports. And special ed, it just depended on which building you were in. And this year, they've done a huge balancing of caseloads. So we need a lot of work this year, just helping the staff better understand. As we moved away from the old, some of you will remember, evolve model that we had. So, but that's been a big change. And so Stacy is, Dr. Hoddington Toller is really working hard on that. And the last one is really all these district priorities. We have a lot of things that are ongoing. These are things I'm responsible for. And, you know, when you look at what the curriculum team was presenting tonight, most of what they're talking about, we didn't have three years ago. And I, Karen's nodding her head, because we had, we were about four years into strategic plan, and we had not been able to pull off the things that they've managed to do. And I think keeping this going during COVID has also such a tribute to just the teamwork, because I can't be successful for not working as a team. And so we have a lot of great people in place. Some of the priorities, the data who have been here for those children, again, who have been here five years, this is, it's very fascinating for the principals. And I think it's helping them also look at their buildings even a little deeper. If we have, if we're not seeing the growth again, what does the data say when you, they've been with us? The second one is really looking at the communications. All of these communications are new. And when you get down to the bottom, plus the curriculum updates that we started, special education news was new last year, the out news we rolled out last year. And we, this year, a real focus for us is making sure in every building, they have a weekly or twice monthly, and there's a regulation that supports it, communication. And a target area, I would say, Anne, is the high school. This is new for them. So high school parents should be seen from the office of the principal, like you do in K eight. Every two, I think they're going every two weeks. So that'll be new for us this year for communication. We also, again, monitoring what's happening with the Western Middle School with that remediation action plan. I was just in a meeting on that, I believe, yesterday or the day before. But that's, we're really trying to be as aggressive as we can to get that project going. Again, focusing all of our capital projects, we meet almost every day on capital. And that's Dan Watson, and now Blaze, obviously our new CFO and myself. And really looking at things that were kind of slowed down during the supply chain challenges, how are we making sure to continue to close capital? And I think, you know, you'll see in this, some of the work that, that we're doing, you may see some updates to even the financial report, because somebody new is doing it. And so, you know, he's coming in with a different set of eyes. So we're working on that right now. The regulations for Cabe, this has been a huge issue. So it's a goal of mine to try to get through. There are very few E, E old policies left, but now there's an L series. And there's a lot of those. So I'm hoping to get through, if I can, all those this year. And then, of course, the strategic plan work, once the committee has a chance to come together, they've all seen the work that we've done this summer. And I'm hoping that we can get our, our next meeting and then get that in front of the board for feedback, because, to be honest, a lot of the work that you're hearing is reflected in the plan, because we had to have a focus as a district. We don't want people floundering. So we're very excited about that. So there's a lot of work on here. Everything is tied back to making sure not only things are completed, but that we're being successful and how our students are performing and our student achievement.
While she were sharing, it's cost savings. So, you know. So this is really helpful. I know, I know it looks simple, but I'm sure it took a lot of time to put together. And I know we, we tend to add priorities, not take away. So with that in mind, I will, sorry, Joe, you've been talking a lot. It's Joe's turn.
Mine's not the usual comment, like usual, so. But it's a repeated comment I've made. And I thought it was maybe a suggestion that I kind of was a little off target. But I still, after doing a little more research, I still want to be number one. You can't be number one unless you want to be number one. And the three years that I have served on the Board of Education, we've increased. We've gone from eleven to seven to four. I'd like to be one. So all these things that you put there are obviously very important. But for many reasons, I know that when, in my wife's business and in the real estate business, and many of us, our biggest single investments in our lives are in our homes. And when it comes to, comes to when you're shopping for a home and you're looking for a place to raise a family, you, you look at the school districts and you see the rankings of those school districts. You don't get to have a meeting really with the superintendent and sit down and talk, or or with building administrators or teachers and say, hey, how's your district? They kind of look in the ranking and see what the ranking is, or whatever the ranking is used. And they say, well, that's number one. I'm moving to the town that has the number one school system. So it's important to the community, because the, the, most people's single biggest investment is their home. And if their home is in the school district that is number one in the area they're trying to shop for schools, then our valuations go up. The issues, education, educating our kids is obviously paramount. That, that is incredibly important. And we don't want to change things in order to get better rankings, but we can work simultaneously at making sure we find out what the ranking agencies need, what the ranking agencies want. And, and not change our methods to teach the children, but try to understand what they want and maybe present to them what they want. As a, as a, as a coach, for, for many years, wanting to be ranked where we belonged to be ranked, or even maybe sneak a little higher than another team, sometimes a conversation with the ranking agency might give me that advantage if the conversations is presented properly. And the team would benefit, the reason why the conversation was, the team benefited from the higher ranking. So I do believe that should be a priority, because there's a lot of reasons why it should be.
Ms. Hirsch.
I'm good at sharing. I try. I'm going to tag on to sort of what Karen was saying and what Joe was saying, because this is exactly what I was going to say. And I think, after hearing you explain your thought processes between, behind, at least goal number one, I have a recommendation or suggestion, because what I had come, you know, we didn't have a lot of time to look over this, but to me, I was like, I think the number one goal should always be focusing on improving educational outcomes for all of our students. We talk about monitoring, evaluating effectiveness, effectiveness is correctional, curriculum instruction and assessments, which is what Mark was talking about earlier tonight. We've not had the opportunity to see any achievement data in well over a year. And so we're going to have, that's going to be very exciting, I think, for all of us. Or devastating, whatever. I'm going to go with exciting. I like to look at silver linings in October, I am, in October. And, and I, and I think somewhere in there, I think if what you were talking about with goal number one really is improving student outcomes and achievement, looking to close that opportunity gap or academic achievement gap. And it is trying to bring our rankings up. So it's, when we do that, so to me, it's more about terminology. So instead of enhancing the process for curriculum development and implementation, which is what it is, it's improving student outcomes. And we do that by enhancing the process for development and implementation. It is by monitoring the outcomes and making sure it's effective. It's the two hours plus of the first two conversations we had tonight were all about that. And I think when we look at the strategic plan and the discussions that we had in that committee, that is what we were talking about. That leads exactly to what Joe is saying. It's not just having an incredible football team, or a rugby team, or tennis, or swimmers. It's not about having incredible essayists, or artists, or bands. It is about what our children do in those classrooms and what they take when they leave that classroom, from grade to grade, school to school, out into the world and to our, into their lives. So if there's a, and I'm not necessarily saying to add, but I think it is, the focus should be always on the students and the academic achievement. So it's just if the way we change the way we word goal number one, I think that's gets you where you want to go. And I know it sounds silly to change the wording, but it addresses exactly what Karen was saying and what Joe was saying. And to me, is always our top priority is ensuring our students academic achieve, well, health and safety, but then, you know, academic achievement and giving them what it is that they need.
A lot of this ties to the strategic plan, I suspect. Yeah, so, here you go.
Let's think about, so let's think for a moment about, so I like this, the, I think we need to think about as far as systems here, right? So we've got the strategic plan. And the purpose of strategic plan, as it's going to, as the draft is nearing completion, the purpose of the strategic plan, to be clear, is really about what Karen was saying about academics, right? And it's about how, if we target these metrics, we are more fully realizing our vision of the graduate. Alright, so it's all about grounded in student achievement. So you've got that strategic plan. Then we also, we have this district priorities statement, which is more than just academic achievement. We've got the board goals, we've got the superintendent goals, and then we've got the, the board goals, which are still circulating out there. I, I hear. No, I know. So I'm just thinking, as far as systems wise, like how all these things fit together. So in a way that I think I kind of understand how they fit together, but if only I kind of understand how to think about it, you know, how do we communicate all that to the public? So what I like about this document is that it very clearly attempts to define the work of the superintendent. They, and I would argue that in doing that, it speaks to both the strategic plan and maybe, maybe the board goals, but it does certainly works towards us getting to number one. But it does certainly works towards us getting to number one. I would arg, actually argue for eliminating, so here you go. Eliminating one of the district priorities because I think, I think number one actually kind of speaks to. If we do number, if you're doing number six, you're doing number one. They, I would, and I don't mean to be glib about this, I would move the strategic plan one to number one. As far as the priorities, because to your point, because it's about student achievement.
Guides everything we do.
Right. So I would make, you know, if we're, if the district priorities or a public document, I would put the strategic plan as number one. The, but I would suggest that evaluating district data of students who have been here for five years, things like that. They, as will become clear, once the draft complete, we, we kind of, that's kind of part of the plan. The, so if we're trying to simplify things, not that you're not going to do that, that could be a way of, of, of streamlining in a way that, that helps us, helps us better. Present this in a way that the community can understand what all these things, how all these things fit together.
They most definitely should be married, those two things. And so I think when this comes back to us, exactly. I think when they, they come back, comes back to us, we should maybe actually have it with the strategic plan, like update. Just for us, sorry, either one, Laura.
I would like a nickel for every time Dr. Mercanti Anthony says the words strategic plan. I will be so rich. I, I think having a new central middle school will certainly make our district more desirable, just putting it out there. But I do think that I learned about a growth mindset in my visit to North Bayanis for the beginning of school. And while we don't say we can't do it, we're not number one, we're not going to get there, but we, if we have a growth mindset. We think we're getting there, we're not there yet, but I think we can. And I think believing that we can, putting the, laying the groundwork for how we get there. I, I think these are really good goals. And I think it would have been enough, you know, for some people to have to onboard a bunch of new talent. Work on a district-wide security plan, completely redo and rebuild a website from scratch. I mean, there are some really meaty things that have gone on over the last year and even just the last, you know, few months. So I'm very happy with what I'm seeing on this, on this document.
So I'll go back to comments that obviously Karen and Joe had said. But I really do, what I think is lacking here is something with respect to just pure academic achievement. And I think that has to be articulated as an independent goal, exclusive of everything else. And I think I've spent some time on the website that you had circulated with the link for the assessment data. And I think maybe, you know, I'm sure you guys have been looking at it. But I would suggest goal, certain goals related to what you're seeing in that assessment data is something that you want to address in more of an academic achievement component. You know, a lot of our ARPESR funding was purely come to address learning loss and promoting academic achievement. So I would think we would want something specific as to that as a goal. I said this, otherwise I do like the curriculum component as a goal. And continuing to push that through because I think we all see a value add in having a uniform curriculum of what teachers teach across the district in all grades. And so I do think that's important. I said this last year and I'm struggling with this and I'll give it some further thought because this is the first time I'm seeing this tonight. But I look at what you have as goal three, which is, and, and which is, you know, continuing on the district priorities. I view that as a job description as opposed to a goal. I think this is your job as a superintendent to do on a regular basis. And I struggled with this last year and I think the board did at some level too and said, and we ended up passing it, although I voted against it. But everybody got comfortable saying, well, we think we know, we think Tony, you know what you're doing. So we're going to go ahead and pass it. Again, I'm not comfortable doing that this year and I would encourage the rest of my board members to not be comfortable that way either. And rather articulate specifically what we want to have achieved in goals as opposed to a job description. And how we can measure those going forward, because I do think, one, that gets to Joe's comment of how we can successfully achieve to rise in the rankings. Two, focus on our students so that year over year, we're seeing marked improvement. But also three, that then we can in turn, in our June meeting, provide much better strategic guidance for you as to where we see this district going and growing, because those are pure numbers that people are going to be looking at and assessing. And again, I look at the district priorities as a job function and I check the box and not a goal.
Yeah, I think the whole problem we did last year is we kind of hash, hash and rehashed it. And that's how we got this list of district priorities, because people wouldn't get comfortable to get it down to like a manageable number and was getting into fifteen. And the process last year was choppy to say the least. So I agree with you that, you know, some of these are just job elements. I think my concern with an academic goal is I think we have to be specific. I think we can't just say increase academic performance because it's a little too vague. Right? So I think if there's something you feel is, and you can ponder, you know, whether there's something to say, I'm going to work on math scores. ELA, what, you know, whatever it is, and I think we can kind of go from there. And maybe some of these district priorities just get folded into a new third, like there's the third goal would be academic achievement. And then we fold different things into it and some of them just fall by the wayside. Or there's a fourth one about the strategic plan and call it a day.
That, that's all right. I mean, because you, because you guys have seen it and the strategic plan, and that's been one of the, that's been one of the challenges. Is that we're doing all the work, but we really haven't had a district strategic plan. You know, the first year we were able to close out a lot of things that hadn't been done, but we've been doing the work without that. But in the way that we, the work we've done this summer, there are six goals. And, you know, they're very targeted. They are, after looking at data, getting feedback last year from our leadership team. And each one of those has metric for the next five years that goes right with that. So I think once you get a chance to see, after the committee looks at it and vets it, I think you'll be able to see that's where the metrics are. That, that actually, my goal is to make sure that we're, you know, we're accomplishing what we set out to do strategically, that the board would approve that strategic plan. So I, I think we're doing that. It's just like putting the cart before the horse kind of thing. Because I don't want to put something on here that you haven't approved or the committee hasn't really discussed yet.
Having that, we have, we haven't had the opportunity to meet to, as a committee, to then bring the strategic plan forward to the board. And I think that that's partially why this is a little bit amorphous. I think it's also a little bit amorphous because again, we haven't had S back results. We haven't had a lot of that achievement data to be able to look at and say, we need to improve this by thirty percent. We need this number to go up. But we know that we are, you know, we, we've just finally seen at least some of the state numbers as a general basis. So that's why I was saying to me, it's, it's, even if it's just the terminology of saying it's focused more on student achievement, how we get there. And, and I think, I agree, it can't just be an open-ended thing. We also have to remember that, yeah. There's two sets of goals here. We talked about this also with strategic plan. You have the short-term goals and the long-term goals. And this, you know, the super's goals are, you know, we do year to year, but a lot of this, you're not going to be able to see, if we're talking about it's student achievement. You may not be able to, to make that kind of leap where we're, what we're talking about in a year. That's a three-year, you, you know, you. You don't see immediate change in one year in a lot of those numbers and a lot of that data. And we don't have anything to really look back on because we've had, you know, so. I think there is a way that we can do this to, to get to what everybody's saying. But I haven't taken a deep enough dive because we just got them. So anyway.
Okay, I was going to add something. Go ahead.
You want me to go first?
Yep.
Mine's just kind of a question, the, maybe a misunderstanding yet, but we're asking as a, as a goal to increase scores. Isn't the increase scores a function of the intelligence level of the group of kids that are going through? I'll make a sports comparison. Every year, every year you try to win the state championship. But you could have the best team in the history of your school. If the school up the block is better, then you don't win the state championship. You even know your kids are the best. You're saying increase, if in a perfect world, aren't we doing the, the education properly? Where the, the kids with, if we have a group of kids that have a higher IQ coming through, they're going to score better and lower IQ will score less.
It's growth. It's growth. It's.
So a mishearing, okay.
It's not the actual score. It's the growth that you see.
Growth being.
The, the growth in individual students. So, you know.
So we're not talking like SAT scores. That's where I was confused. Thanks. But measures.
So, so for example, so for example, so say there's a, a, a seventh grader that's reading on a fifth grade reading level. Okay. So it's, the assumption is that of the system is that a student moves one grade level a year. Right? So that student is already, obviously he's reading two grades below grade level. The student is going to make standard progress. He would assume at the end of seventh grade, the student started at fifth grade, the student's actually going to still be reading at maybe a beginning of sixth grade level, one year growth. They, if we're, as opposed to accelerated growth, which is what we were trying to measure as a metric. So that is a way of measuring the system. So instead of a student measuring a one year growth. One and a half years in one year's time, that would be a measurement of the value added of the system.
So it's not an absolute score. It's a function of, of a lot of factors that are kicking in, which is something I know nothing about, but you're okay with. That's a measurement that I just don't understand at this point, but you're making it to, I do understand. Thank you.
Give Ms. Costin a nickel because this will become clearer when you see the draft of the strategic plan.
But this is, this is definitely, I mean, this is the whole growth mindset thing that we're talking about.
Sorry, I was confused, but you made that clearer to me. Thank you.
No, and did you want to add Dr. Jones or is that? Yeah, that, no, not on that topic. I lost my train of thought for a second. But I think, no, I think it's a, it's important. And I think that we have to tie this to the strategic plan. The, the other thing that I was going to say is, and kind of going off of what Laura did. There, there's so much, right? I mean, you could, you could have twenty goals on here because, I mean, I've, running a business. Seems like a walk in the park to running a school. I have to say, and because there's so many different stakeholders and so many constituents. And, you know, safety and security is definitely one of your priorities. And I think about it because of from COVID to now, as you mentioned, the safety and security of what we have in front of the RTM next week. That's also something, but you don't, that's just understood, you know. So I'm not saying that you make that a goal. There's just, there's so many things. One of the other things that I don't think is a goal, but perhaps it is, is that look at the team you built tonight. And that is also goes to the curriculum development and the implementation, right? Because they spent all summer working on it and implementing it. But to me, that's one of the things I really value in a leader is actually building a team and then fostering it. And I know Joe does as well. I'm not sure how you kind of put that into a goal, but to me, that's just like ongoing leadership, leadership, really. Culture. Yeah. Okay. Cody.
Well, before I get to my question, as an aside to your comment, a good measurement of that is how effective you are at turning out, replacing your staff. You want to have some measurement, now that that's where we want to go, but that is a way to look at it. But I'm just curious, what is the point of this document? Is this, and I'm interested in the, in your view on this, Tony?
You know, I think it, it serves a couple of purposes. It, it lets the board know, first of all, that you were trying to be on the right track for the work that we want to do. And for me, what, what I see is the key work of the district that I'm charged with. So if these things all fail and we don't get anything done, then that falls back on to me. So at the end of the year, you know, I give you an update on these goals. And, and if we don't get something done, I should be able to tell you why. You know, and I'm going to use like even on these priorities, one of the reasons I like to have them on here. And it's not, I, I agree with what you're saying, not as much of a goal, part of the job description. But you'd be surprised how many board members don't know what I actually do, in the sense that it is multifunctional with so much, so many different facets. And I think a lot of times people don't realize that I'm very involved in construction. I'm very involved in the solar media. I'm at those meetings where sometimes they don't see that as a role of the superintendent. So I see this as a way to communicate to the board, the things, am I on target getting the work done that you want to, want done? You know, and if there's something that's not on here that is critically important and I've missed it, like you said, security and safety, we could add. I think last year we had pulled it off because we didn't see that needed to be on here because it was, so it's not on this document, but it's very important. So I see it as a way for me to communicate all the work that we're, we're doing this year and to move the district forward in every way. And again, I think when we get a strategic planning document, you're going to see the metrics because all six of those goals have metrics. And I'm responsible for us to try to hit those metrics as well. And if we don't, we should be able to say, we've dug into the data deep enough, we can tell you where some of those weak points are and why.
One thought is, what I, I like how you have a number of like technical things that you could kind of look at, at the end of the year and go yes or no. So I get from the kind of, hey, here's a way to evaluate me. You could separate the, you could make the goals like three one-sentence things, be number one in the state better scores in whatever way. Like, like, because I think a lot of people think of goal, and this is maybe where it crosses into like, is this a document for public? Or is this just for evaluation? But you could say, here's like the big picture North Star. Look at these, this is direction we're heading and this is what my big focus is. And those are kind of soft or squishy, or even if they're measurable, but it's like just a big idea. And then you could have the appendix that just lists all your stuff. So at the end of the year, you're like, I did this, I did this, I did this. And, and but the criteria for being in the appendix would be that it, it has to be like, it's not, you know, support something. It's like this gets done or not. That might be a way to make it serve, I think, all the purposes. The one thing I would recommend, I think a worthwhile goal to consider, not just because of recent events. But in partially because of it, is thinking a little bit about how to build, I don't know what the word would be, confidence in curriculum in the district. Because I think if things feel more fraught than normal and not, I don't think it's all imagined. You know, like I, and I think you as a leader can do something to, it's something to take on for yourself to say, hey, I want to leave the year where people have faith in our institution as like a true academic institution versus, you know, some kind of you know, ideological machine or something. And I think that's a role that uniquely like your position to tackle versus anyone else. I mean, other people can do stuff too, but you're probably best situated. So that's one thing I would recommend is a big picture goal, like something for confidence in that.
Thank you. That's good feedback. And, and I will say that's one of the reasons I even have that communication priority on here. Is, you know, if you go back three years ago, we didn't do any of that in communication. And I think it's trying to find the right methodology to be able to communicate that. The curriculum team is doing a lot of workshops, inviting parents to the table to show them what the curriculum is. We're putting as much online as we can. And I think right now we are, we are in a tough climate where it's, it's been challenging to find the right mechanism to really share what we do. But we're going to continue to try every avenue possible. Because we would like for people to have as much understanding about what goes on in the classroom. And I think systemic curriculum is going to make a huge difference for us, which that's brand new and it, you know, it's new for Greenwich. But I think that's going to help because I think it's going to stop some of the miscues that you heard Gordon, you know, reference tonight. Because we did see academic freedom as teaching whatever you want, whenever you want. And that really isn't what academic freedom is. We're teaching to the standards. We're teaching developmentally appropriate. And I think that having a level set is, is going to help us this year as well. But I appreciate that and, and agree, we need to continue to work on that. And I think when you see the parent survey results, it'll be helpful for the board too, because our parents overwhelmingly, we had, I think it's at least two thousand or around that. Take our parent survey and it's very positive from the parents. So, and I think that may be coming, is that in October? Do you remember Ann or, yeah?
Parent survey is a great measurement thing for the, the goal, something to look at. For random ideas, you could, you could get a conservative ombudsman to live in this building and just harass you guys all day. Or I'd be happy to do a conservative book club for your. Oh, I'm fine with this. You know, we could read Milton Friedman and Thomas Sowell and talk about it with your teachers and that may open people's minds.
No, but it's, it's a really, sometimes I don't know what to say after you. But it's, I like the building confidence part. It's funny, I've been thinking too about how do you just, I mean, Karen Hirsch always talks about communication, 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 right? And I think we do a really good job communicating to the parents. And sometimes I see that more as a parent than I do as a board member. And then I know at one point we sort of said that to communicate to the BET and the RTM, but like the broader community, right? Also needs to somehow get our messaging and it's, it's not, you know, I, I don't know what the, obviously the newspaper helps. The radio helps, but you know, what other avenues, right? A Superbowl commercial, which you're going to help. Okay. But that's a, it's a, it's a point well taken. Um, if there are no, how, how do we want to go from here? I was thinking that you can send me like all of the thoughts, then I can try to coalesce it and then bring it back to the agenda when the strategic plan comes back. And maybe we ties to that a little bit and then we'll have had a little more time to at least review this and.
I think workshops, like a retreat.
It's a better, it's a better than doing this at a full monthly meeting in the auditorium. Yeah. When we're doing it at midnight, you know, I think this is vastly more productive.
Yeah. And I think the best way to do that, because I think we've had a lot of comments and a lot of feedback tonight would be, I, I don't want to vote, Mike and I don't want to vote on it the next time around. I think we want to see it again and see it in maybe in connection with the strategic plan because I want to get it right. And so I, I think that that's the better way to handle it because last year was a big cluster F in getting it done. And sorry, that's the only way to put it. I was so disappointed when it happened. I don't want that to happen this year.
So I'm looking at October 6th. That seems to be, is that when the strategic plan was coming or is it before that? I thought it was before that. I'm not seeing, I don't have the itemized agenda in front of me, but the October 6th is the next, well, the next board retreat next week is on Capitol.
That's just Capitol.
That's just Capitol and we're going to need a whole day on that. So, um, so then it might be October 6th, but okay, we can, but I think that's, those are good thoughts. But if you want in the interim, if you guys want to send me your thoughts and I can try to do my best to like, put it into a document or something.
This document, do we have to post this one? Because it wasn't posted.
Yes, we do. We do.
But I don't think we lose, and I don't think we're losing something or doing ourselves a disservice by waiting until October. So my preference would be to get it right. And it's not as if nobody's not working. So.
Correct. And then maybe we'll have a better template for next year.
Exactly. Okay. Sorry. Did you have another thing? Otherwise I was going to move on.
Yeah, just while I, it's connected. So like while we're, just while we're, we're thinking about it, if we're talking about this coming back and things like that in a perfect world, it could be, I don't know how big the robust the September 22nd agenda is, but that might be something where we could introduce, introduce the, the plan quickly. And then so that we could talk about it on the 6th.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, one, tell me when you have your next committee meeting and if you think you'll be ready and all that. Okay. It needs to be less than 30 minutes. Oh my gosh. Okay. Moving to action item, teacher evaluation flexibility, which I, Dr. Caravella, I saw a nice exchange between you and Michael Joseph on this topic. But why don't you present it? Then I'm just going to let MJ here ask his questions. So the whole board could be privy to it.
So this is the third year that the state has allowed us to have flexibilities because of COVID. So they have really expressed that what they want for us is through the state of Connecticut for administrators to be in classes more often. That is also our goal to have our administrators in our classes as much as possible. One of our goals for this year is to make sure that every administrator is in every classroom in their building every week. So the flexibilities will help us to do that because what it will do is that it'll give us the opportunity to have many, many informal observations, 20 minutes to 30 minutes with feedback to all of our, our teachers. It will help us as administrators to improve our practice with giving actionable feedback to our teachers in a very immediate way so that they can use it right away. It also will give us the teachers an opportunity to improve their practice and get feedback more often than they have in the past. And it ultimately will improve our student outcomes. In 2017, 18, our evaluation and supervision was much more. We got into teachers' classrooms, but only a few teacher classrooms for their formal observations, for their units of instruction. But we didn't get into all teachers' classrooms. This way we will be assured of being in all teachers' classrooms very often. And I think it will make a positive difference. So we are hoping that you will approve the flexibilities for this year. And then if you do, I will be happy to let the state know what we are doing and that you have accepted them.
Sorry, I have, by the way, should have put this motion on the table to beforehand. So just a motion to accept the state of Connecticut evaluation of flexibilities for school year 2022, 2023. Can I get a second? Okay, Ms. Costin. Now we can continue the discussion. Ms. Hirsch.
We may probably be asking the same question. You know, my big, I'm going to just ask a quick overall question. It just, this was given to us by the state. I, you know, I know how we do teacher evaluations. But are we required to do exactly this that is being given to us or is
This is minimal. It's minimally. So we can do more. Teachers, administrators can still do formal evaluations if there is a teacher that they have concerns about. Or a teacher may want to try something new and ask, ask the administrator to come in and watch what they're going to do. Feedback. The battery is dying. Erin, help me, help me. I, I, I'll move up for a minute. Erin, I'll move up.
And while you're doing that, my only other thought is, you know, since this is the first week you're seeing this, it's, and it's at this particular time. And it is on as an action item. We hadn't had the opportunity here from GEA. I just was wondering what our educators think about what's in here.
GE. GEA is very happy with this because they're supportive of it. It gives them the opportunity to have administrators in the classroom and giving them feedback. It's going to also enable our administrators to be on the same page so that when they go in the classroom, we are calibrating and we are going to begin that work, not next week, but the following week, I believe.
I have to say, just that made me think about it. People were so pleasantly surprised by the board visiting classes. And that makes me think of how they actually seem to want the administrators there too. And I know Joe and I thought on the first day, do you really want us to be like coming around your building? And they, they love having people there. It's, they want the feedback. They want the engagement and I sort of sticking with that.
I sent a lot of classes on that first day too. And the teachers were like, thanks for coming in. And do you know, so it really, they really want us in there and they want the feedback. They want the good, the bad and the ugly. How else? And it's going to help us to get better.
I was just going to say, I sense a theme. We keep talking about immediate, you know, taking information for immediate feedback, positive improvement for positive outcomes. So I'm liking that as the theme tonight.
We don't need a first read on this. This is something we can take action on.
Well, we actually would technically have to waive.
Okay.
That.
That's what I was, okay. So the, the motion is to.
We'll have to waive the first read rule. Yeah, I just put for, I mean, I guess you want us to take action on this tonight, I assume. Please. Okay. So I need to have a motion to waive the first read rule. We can wait until the end of the discussion. That's fine.
You're going to have to take the motion off of the table first.
That's a good point. All right. Keep asking your questions and then we'll come back to that at the end.
So did we have to have COVID to do this? And why wouldn't we be doing this anyway? I mean, to be honest, it just seems silly, right? That we have to have this come down from the state to have to do this, to, to give us this flexibles. I mean, it just, do you see what the logic is that I'm going with this? It just seems very strange.
Correct. But whenever you change your evaluation system in the school district, you have to get permission from the board first and then send it to the state board of education, state department of education. And they will ultimately approve whether you will get the appropriate information that you need and give the teachers the appropriate support and the administrators the appropriate support. So they started this because of COVID because nobody was in school. And they felt that it wasn't fair for teachers. It wasn't fair to administrators. So they wanted to, you know, level the playing ground. The state really is looking towards changing the way we do evaluations to a, a process like this. And that actually is a national change in evaluations. So they are coming on board and I've been in touch with the state and they really like what we've been doing. They like our rubric. They like the fact that we're doing more informal observations. So if, if you approve this tonight, then as I let the state know, then they may use Greenwich as a positive example.
Michael Joseph.
Yeah. So, so that a point, so Cody, this will make you feel better. So this is an area where the state is at least a decade behind. New York went to many observations 10 years ago. It makes a lot more sense as opposed to an administrator going in the traditional way, which is what if you remember when we were in school, the, the administrator in the back of your classroom, maybe once in a blue moon, they, so traditional way where administrator comes in, sits for the whole lesson, once a year, and that's your feedback. They, that's not doing anything to support teacher growth or teacher practice as opposed to frequent shorter visits over time, which can support instructional growth and, and development of practice. I guess the one question I have with the, or one question I have with the flexibility is, are we, are we setting a target around the many observations? Does the state give us a target as part of the flexibilities? Like what are we, I've seen many observations in other districts where we, they, they launch forward and then it's, not saying this is going to happen here, but it was implemented poorly and then end up with one mini observation or the course of year or too many observations. And obviously that's counterproductive.
So the state gives us the minimal amount and that's how I have mess, messaged it out to the administrators. However, I've told them and Dr. Jones too, is that we expect you to be in those classrooms every week. So it will be more than what the minimal is. Three informals, one review of practice for the observations, but you have, you have other meetings before that, setting goals, having a mid-year conference, having an end of the year conference, having reflections for teachers to share with their administrators.
If you have a hypothetical bad teacher that is unwilling to change in any way, does this system make it harder, easier, or not impact the ability to part ways with them?
I think that this system is going to make it easier for us to identify those teachers who are having struggles and be able to help them because we can still do formal observations and put teachers on a plan if we need to.
One other question, just adding, this one seems like on the surface to be such a no brainer. Is there something like, well, someone who's opposed to this, what would they say? Like, is it?
People just want to understand what we're.
No, no, I, I was just curious if I'm like missing something bigger. Oh, wait, this is just a no renter.
More importantly, Christina, I, no, you know, I texted Michael, it's not all action needs two reads because it's not policy. So for example, the budget report doesn't, two reads. So we don't need a second, right? We can take a vote on it without suspending the rules.
Enlighten you on what? I had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. Thank you very much. I went up to Sarasota to the races. And my husband is, and I take $60 for betting and we came home with 40, so we only lost 20. So I would say it was a very good weekend.
So it will not have you teach math.
The weather was beautiful. Yes, I did some, some multiplying and division. And I applied my math skills to real world situations and it was very much fun.
So at, exactly. At Parkway years ago, there used to be the, the assembly, right? Where the students would get up and they would read.
Oh, what they did for their summer vacation? Yes.
And my, one of my children went up and talked about me taking them to Saratoga racetrack. They were in kindergarten and then like the odds and like how they bet on it and all this stuff. And this was like a few years ago and a father turns to me and he goes like this, that's great that you're on the school board and you're teaching like, like joking. He was friendly. This is, I was like, this is math. Okay. It's just.
It was, it was, I have to reteach myself every year because I don't do that. I mean, that's the only thing I've ever bet on.
She's on the phone. I think we can take a vote. Okay. So it's on the table. All in favor of this. Okay. We were trying to keep, keep it open for you, Karen, but we ran out of conversation. Okay. So all in favor, that passes eight zero. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Ms. Costin. No, no, no. It's just, it's a, it's a written, it's written. Not part. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Costin. All in favor? Oh, she did. Passes eight. Oh, you're not, you're not journey? Okay. That's a eight zero. Thank you very much. Good night.